Okay, we received these in advance of the meeting. Are there any comments or changes to the minutes for October 3?
The only, this is, I'm sorry, this is so nitpicky. We started at 7:05. Jonathan got here at 7:10, or Jonathan seconded. So I think that Jonathan got here at 7:05. It's like a mystery movie. So O'Keefe got here at 7:10, but we started at 7:05 and he seconded.
Excuse me, shall I change that?
Yes.
That would be easy to change on the first page. I'll change Jonathan O'Keefe's arrival to 7:05.
Thank you. Any other changes? Can I have a motion to approve these minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you. We'll move to the minutes of October 17.
I can move to approve those also?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Rosner? Thank you. Okay. In accordance with the provisions of Section 511 of Chapter 48 Massachusetts General Laws, these public hearings have been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and Abutting Towns. These hearings are being held for the purpose of providing an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding the proposed amendments to the Amherst zoning bylaw. These amendments will be on the warrant for the Fall Special Town Meeting. This is A 0913, two-family dwellings, this is a citizen petition. To amend the standards and conditions of Section 3.321, two-family detached dwelling of the zoning bylaw, to reclassify certain categories of two-family dwellings as converted dwellings, Section 3.3241, or supplemental apartments, Section 5.011. And as this is a citizen article, we'll hear from someone, proponent, Ms. Barbarat.
Okay, I'm Denise Barbarat, 67 North Whitney Street, Precinct 9, Town Meeting Member, and I'm actually speaking on behalf of the Coalition of Amherst Neighborhoods. And I understand there was fairly extensive discussion of this article at the zoning subcommittee. I unfortunately was not able to be there. So what I'm going to do first is just present the remarks that I had prepared beforehand, that I presented last night to the Select Board, and then hopefully fill in the gaps about some of the, to further clarify some of the points that were brought up in the discussion that you held in the zoning subcommittee, I guess from 5 o'clock to 6:30. Okay. What Article 16 proposes, to my mind, is very simple and very straightforward. It states that if you start out with a single-family home and you renovate, expand, or put an addition on the single-family home so that the end result is a two-family home, also known as a duplex, you must do so under a special permit under the zoning, before the zoning board of appeals. Article 16 further takes advantage of already extant and applicable language that is found in the zoning bylaw by treating such renovations, expansions, or additions either as conversions, which are now governed under Section 3.3241 of the zoning bylaw, or as supplemental apartments, also known as mother-in-law apartments, which is an accessory use under Section 5.011 of the zoning bylaw. The Coalition of Amherst Neighborhoods has proposed this amendment to the zoning bylaw because of growing concern over the unintended consequences of another amendment that resulted from the Fall Special Town Meeting of 2008. At that time, the permitting of duplexes, an RG, which is general residence, and RVC, which is Village Center Residence, for those who are unfamiliar with the zoning bylaw, was changed from special permit to site plan review. Special permit goes before the zoning board of appeals. Site plan review goes before the planning board. This was one of the first changes that resulted from the master plan, and it aimed to increase density in a modest way, excuse me, by accommodating two families within what is essentially and appears to be essentially a single-family residence with a single-family residence footprint. By accommodating more families in the central residential districts, it would enhance and protect traditional family neighborhoods. This was one of the points that was made over and over again, both in the master plan and in people responding to the master plan, that they really wanted to protect the integrity and the character of our family neighborhoods, particularly in the central residential areas. To the dismay of many residents, this has not been the actual result of this bylaw. What we have begun to see are single families, single-family homes being bought and either renovated and divided to accommodate now instead of four individuals, usually student tenants, eight individuals. This was the case with 156 Sunset Avenue, which actually went before the zoning board of appeals because it was a non-conforming property, or large two-story structures added to existing single-family homes. This was the case of 79 Taylor Street, which went before the planning board, I believe in 2001, probably sometime spring of 2001. Okay. I meant to look up the date, but don't have it. But the date doesn't really matter that much. I do not know myself whether or not these two properties have been disruptive. I do know that there was one police call that was noted in the Amherst Bulletin's police log. I believe it was an individual sending a beer bottle from one of the windows to the sidewalk below, but that's all that I know of. I haven't requested any reports for that particular property. But regardless of whether or not the police have been invited parties to these particular residents, I do know in general that what happens is when you have an increase of this type, you have more cars, you have more problems with parking, and you have more activity at all hours of the day and many hours of the night, more than you would see with what would consider a traditional family of a couple or individuals with or without children. This is why we would like to see the permitting of such two-family homes and duplexes return to the special permit process so that the zoning board of appeals can decide whether or not such a use is appropriate in either the general residence or the Village Center Residence neighborhood in question from the outset of the process. Rather than leaving open what, at least to my perspective, is the rather large loophole of a single-family owner-occupied home that once it has been permitted, appears to have nothing to stop it from becoming a two-family rental home, either because the owner has to move, or the owner has decided, well, I'd rather not live in a duplex, I'm just going to rent it out. We don't know what the reason is. But as far as I can see, there is absolutely no permitting requirement for that change to happen. So rather than have this happen after we have gone through site plan review, we would like to see the whole process returned to a special permit under the ZBA so that they can look at it and decide, here's the neighborhood, here's what's going on, is this use going to be appropriate regardless of whether or not it is owner-occupied? This will also bring duplexes more in line with the permitting requirements for both conversion of dwellings and the addition of the supplemental apartments, which are the mother-in-law apartments, which actually are quite small. Supplemental apartments, the largest you can get is 900 square feet, 800 square feet or 900 square feet, I believe, if it complies with the Americans with Disabilities Act, but no bigger than 900 square feet. Either conversions or supplemental apartments do not have nearly as large a visual impact, nor an impact as large with the numbers of individuals living there, and the number of cars, and the number of activities that happen when you put a duplex in. So to my mind, it would be much better to include these duplexes because of the density and the activity level that they can bring, to put those in with the conversions and the supplemental apartments, so that the ZBA is the one who is going to have the last word on whether or not this is appropriate for the particular neighborhood in which it is intended. So there's that. And now, I believe, there was a question as to whether or not, if 13 passes, if 16 would be moot. Was that tenor of the discussion?
Would someone who was here for the zoning subcommittee like to comment on that, Mr. Crowder?
So there's, yeah, we had an interesting discussion about this. We were not able to come to any resolution about how we felt about it. So we're not actually going to make a recommendation of the planning board, we're going to let the whole planning board figure out what to do. There's some sentiment that 16 is unnecessary if 13 passes, and 14 passes, but it might be useful if those don't pass. So we found value in it. Obviously, what we're, our articles are trying to address the same problems that the petition articles are addressing, just in a different way. So there's obviously some value in there. Where exactly the balance should lie, we're not able to, other than to prefer our articles, we're not able to say that this is, should be recommended or not yet.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder.
So I guess, if I can clarify, I will, when we have the discussion, I will make a motion that refers to the disposition of Articles 13 and 14 with regard to Article 16, but it's not coming from the zoning subcommittee, so.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder. Is there anyone else from the Coalition of Amherst Neighborhoods who could speak to the possible conflict between the two?
Not having been present for the discussion and just having had a little bit of time to think about this, I see 16 as an alternative to 13. I guess the difficulty I have with 13 is that when you set up the two classes, I think there's a lot of fluidity between the two classes. If you say, okay, it's going to be owner-occupied, and we like that because owner occupancy does bring, for example, controls over bad tenant behavior, at least if the occupant is not him or herself, a badly behaved person, that's fine, but I, there's no hard and fast barrier there. It can be an owner-occupied duplex one year, and then for all sorts of reasons, it can become a rental property. And if you're saying, okay, we want rental properties, we want rental duplexes to be under the more stringent special permit, if they start out as rental properties, that's one thing. But it seems to me that it could move easily and rapidly from being an owner-occupied property to a rental property, and I don't see anything in Article 13 that will prevent that from happening, because it seems to me that 13 speaks about the permitting and creation, building of duplexes. It doesn't say anything about, here, we've got a duplex, it's built, and now the owner is going to sell it. I don't think, from my, albeit rapid reading of 16, I don't think there's anything in that bylaw, in that version of the bylaw, to prevent somebody deciding to sell the duplex and turn it, and sell it to somebody who's going to make it a rental property. Or if somebody does sell it to make it a rental property, then you have the problem of, somebody's going to purchase the property, but will they be aware that they need a special permit? When will they seek the special permit? Will it be before they sign the purchase and sales agreement, or after they bought the property, then they have to come before the ZBA? And, not that it would probably happen, but what would happen should the ZBA, after everything has been done? What will happen if the ZBA says, sorry, we are not going to give you the special permit, you have to maintain this as an owner-occupied property? So I don't necessarily know the answers to these things, but it seems to me that there are some problems here that have not been resolved. I don't know if something's going to be put in the deed, or exactly how it's going to work out.
Thank you, Ms. Barbarat. Mr. O'Keefe?
Yeah, perhaps I can clarify some of those issues, because it's pretty clear. What Article 13 does is it sets up two different use categories. Ms. Barbarat is right that it doesn't say anything about how you proceed from one of those use categories to another, just as none of the other use category definitions in our zoning bylaw do. But it sets up two different use categories with different permitting requirements, and if anyone seeks to change from one use to another without getting the required permit, that would be a violation of the zoning bylaw enforceable through the existing mechanisms that are in the zoning bylaw. So you could not legally change from owner-occupied to two units rented status without getting a special permit, and if you did so, you would be in violation of the zoning bylaw, and that's enforceable through mechanisms that are in place today.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
If I may, either a site plan review approval by the planning board, or, which would be the case for the first category under Article 13, or a special permit is required to be registered with the registry of deeds, the permit itself. Anyone who is purchasing a property is well advised to have someone do a title search before they buy the property so they know what they're getting into. They find that permit in the registry of deeds, which describes what the use category is, what the conditions for the operation of the use category under the previous owner are, and ostensibly, they would use that information in their decision to decide whether or not to purchase the property. And that would also alert them to the zoning process.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. All right. Is there any questions for the petitioner from the planning board, or other comments? If not, I'll open it up to comments from the public.
I actually have a follow-up question about the last answer. So somebody decides they want to, okay, somebody buys a single-family home. They say, I'm going to live here, and I want to put an addition on this, and I'm going to rent it out so that I can make money to help pay my mortgage. And it comes before you guys, and you say, yep, this is good, we like it, we're going to give you the special permit.
Site plan review.
Site plan review, okay. So, a couple of years goes by, and now he decides, his wife gets a job in Washington with Homeland Security. She can't pass it up. And they decide they're going to move. I got to have my fun somehow. They decide they're going to move, and now they're going to, they're going to leave the tenant they've got in one half of the duplex, and they're going to rent the other half. And we haven't gotten any of the permitting systems put in place. So what's going to happen then? He's going to change it into a rental property, but will he have to come back before you and get a special permit?
ZBA.
ZBA to get a special permit.
So he will need a special permit?
Yes.
If he decides that he's going to rent it out?
The change of use from owner-occupied to non-owner-occupied is a change of use that would require a special permit, and failing to get one would be a violation of the zoning bylaw.
So any property, say this passes, any property from here on in that is permitted as an owner-occupied duplex will have to, should the use change, get a special permit?
That's correct. I'm just going to back up a step and just clarify for everyone's benefit what we're talking about here. On October 17, the zoning subcommittee of the planning board proposed, and what will be Article 13 before the town meeting, which deals with the same piece of the zoning bylaw that this does, two-family dwellings. The article proposed by the zoning subcommittee, and which was recommended 8 to 0 by the planning board, would create two categories of two-family dwellings, owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied. Owner-occupied would require only a site plan review from the planning board, which is a byright use with conditions. Non-owner-occupied would require a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, which need not be granted. It's discretionary on the part of the ZBA. That differs from the petitioner's proposal tonight, which is going to be Article 16 before town meeting, which would make all two-family dwellings subject to a special permit from the ZBA irrespective of whether they're owner-occupied.
If they result from renovation, expansion, or addition, not new duplexes.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I'm just trying to recap where we're at here. So the effect of 13 passing at town meeting would have what effect on this article?
Okay, I think the difference between 13 and 16 is with 13, if you end up with a duplex, first by site plan review, and then the use changes, and somebody has to go back and get a special permit, I think it's going to be very, very hard for the ZBA to say, no, sorry, it's not going to work. You have to have an owner in there, because a duplex will already have been built, there will be precedent in the neighborhood for having a duplex, and it's going to be very hard, I think, to say to a property owner, no, you can't sell it to just anyone. Whoever you sell it to is actually going to have to live in this. Whereas with 16, you start out with, okay, if you want to take a single-family home and you want to make it bigger, then we are, the ZBA will look at it and say, okay, is a duplex itself created on this particular property appropriate for this neighborhood? So you won't, it's kind of like the gas station that they built down in Hadley that was supposed to be a colonial gas station. This is the big, bright, I think, shell one that people claim you can see from outer space. They built the thing, and it was not colonial, and I guess, I don't know if it was the planning board down in Hadley, they kind of got their knickers in a twist about things.
All right. Let's, we're a little bit short on time.
The thing was already built. So I think you have a difference between it's built, well, it's going to be easier to get a permit for it than it's not yet built, let's step back, let's look and see if this is actually something that we want in this particular neighborhood. So that's why I see 13 and 16 as alternate amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Barbarat. Let's hear from some members of the public. Does anybody want to speak to this? Mr. O'Connor?
Vincent O'Connor, Summer Street, Precinct 1, Town Meeting Member. And I just would encourage the members to look at Article 16. What Article 16 accomplishes is that conversions essentially revert back to Section 3.3241, and which is, which requires a special permit. But the construction of a duplex, a two-family dwelling, from the ground up, so to speak, the table that describes by what process that would occur in the various zoning districts is not addressed in Article 16. So that remains intact. And the reality, of course, is that historically, this section has been used for the purpose of creating duplexes, mostly affordable housing, places like Tamarack Lane, Pally Village, Habitat for Humanity has used it, and so forth. So I actually see the two articles, the one from the planning board, which you've already recommended, 8 to 0, and this article is complementary. They accomplish two separate things. The Article 13, the planning board article, creates two classes of two-family dwellings. One is an owner-occupied class, and the other is a non-owner-occupied. The owner-occupied requires only a site plan review, and of course, if it, if the use would change to be non-owner-occupied, as members of the board have described, it would require a special permit. The non-owner-occupied from the beginning would require a special permit.
That's correct.
And so my sense of things is that what we have here is two complementary articles. The planning board has taken the first step by recognizing the distinction between the two uses and providing for it. The petitioner's article accomplishes the second step by making sure that this article addresses the construction of two-family dwellings, or the change in use of two-family dwellings prospectively. And that the conversions of single-family dwellings to more, one or more units, in this case, two units, in this case, adding an additional unit to a single-family dwelling, would revert back to the conversion bylaw, which is entirely by special permit. So I think we have complementary activities, one of which you've already approved, which I agree with, the second which I think is the next step that needs to be taken, so that you have only one section of the bylaw under which conversions would take place. That would be 3.3241, and new construction would be confined to 3.321.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Tucker?
I'd just like to, I agree in part with what Mr. O'Connor said. I'd like to sort of clarify how this falls out if both articles, and remember, we have any number of possible outcomes here with town meeting, but if both articles were to pass more or less as written. One of the things that Article 16 does is to remove from the category of duplex, a single-family dwelling that is created, turned into a two-family dwelling by adding an entirely new unit onto it. If both articles pass, the provisions of Article 13 restrict converted dwellings, for a reason, to basically the conversion of existing structure with the possibility of adding up up to 20% of habitable space through demolition or new expansion. So that category that's being lined out here, the notion that you could add a unit to an existing unit, an entire unit, doubling a building in size, would no longer be possible. That would disappear as a possibility from, among the options for development of two-unit dwellings in Amherst. I'd like to go back to two original purposes. One of the original purposes is that of this article. The principal purpose of this article, as stated more than once by the petitioners, is to turn the categories of duplexes which involve renovation or conversion, which is the kind that has been being experienced rapidly in Amherst and with problematic results, from a site plan review approval principally in the general residence district to a special permit. That could have been done much more readily by changing the permit requirement from site plan review to special permit, as the planning board itself had proposed back at the annual, 2011 annual town meeting, and as you propose in part under Article 13. Part of the original intent under Article 13 is to, along with Article 12, is to better distinguish between what is a duplex and what is a converted dwelling. And we went back to, with Mr. Schreiber's help and others, to the original function of converted dwellings. This use category first arose in the post-World War II period, when the baby boom, in which I am complicit, began to occur, and many large, older historic homes were being rapidly and thoughtlessly converted to multiple-unit dwellings to accommodate the new population.
Okay, we've, let's, do you have something about? Okay, we've, let's, do you have something about reconciling these two, Mr. Tucker?
Yes. The point is that what this does is not take into account that preservation intent. This, in an attempt to get to special permit, this takes anything at all that is the result of, that results in two units that, as a consequence of expansion and renovation, and sticks it under converted dwelling. Converted dwelling has a very specific range and purpose, which Article 13 attempts to accomplish. If both are passed, that portion of this survives. If Article 13 does not pass and Article 16 passes, you now have a very, very different circumstance in which only new two-unit dwellings can be built in the RG District on cleared sites, vacant or cleared sites, which might in some cases be an incentive to demolition in order to clear the site, to have it be brand-new. And anything else is a converted dwelling by special permit, including the possibility of adding, of doubling or trebling, in some cases, the size of an existing building in order to accommodate new development for two units. So, there are some, the mixing and matching here gets us to some unintended consequences, and the using the path of changing the use category rather than changing the permit creates some confusion.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Ms. Krueger?
Just with that clarification from our previous discussion in the zoning subcommittee, we had different, slightly different presentations by different presenters from the same neighborhood coalition. And where we were going in our discussion was that this was drafted before Article 13 was in its current form, and that this could pass, if 13 were to pass, this could potentially be withdrawn, or this might be amended. There was a suggestion of eliminating the reference to, since I crossed it out, five-point something, something that I can't read, which is a supplemental permit, to try to eliminate the confusion that Mr. Tucker was talking about. So, we went off in a different direction about whether to recommend something that was probably going to change, and how would we, how would we want it to change. So, I think, if I'm fair to our discussion, we didn't see them as complementary per se, but it was kind of a moving target. So, we, that's in part why we didn't come up with a final recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Krueger. Mr. Crowder?
So, building on what's been said the last three speakers, I think this article is actually in conflict with Article 14, not with Article 13. So, and 14 is a converted dwelling.
Okay.
So, what, together 13 and 14 are defining the difference between a duplex and a converted dwelling. This also does that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder. Mr. O'Connor, no, now we know. Anyone else from the public like to comment? Anyone else on the planning board? Mr. Crowder?
So, what I'm going to suggest is that this is an alternate approach to defining the difference, which is one of the goals of our articles. And I'm going to move, when it's the appropriate time, that if Articles 13 and 14 don't fail, that we support Article 16 as an alternate approach. But if 13 and 14 do pass, then not to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder. Given the, we have other hearings tonight, I would entertain a motion to close a public hearing at this time. So, moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Is there any further discussion among the planning board about whether or not to recommend this article to town meeting?
So, should I make my motion now, or should I?
Please do.
Okay. So, I move that planning board support Article 16 in the event that Articles 13 and 14 do not pass. Otherwise, do not support it.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder, Mr. Schreiber. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Keefe?
Yeah, so, I guess I am in agreement with the reasoning that Mr. Crowder is following there. I have a bit of worry that that sort of creates an impediment to the adoption of 13 and 14, if, which I feel is a better way of addressing the issue. So, if people are feeling that the way to get more support for this alternate approach is to vote against the articles that we have put, thought, and effort into, and that we feel are a superior approach to the issue, I think that would be unfortunate. And that's the only thing that's giving me some pause about supporting this.
Yeah, I agree that that's, but I also think that it's a good way to get both of them to lose if you try and sabotage the first article. So, the goal is to, which we've heard from the public for years, is that we want to regulate these, the changing of a single-family home into something else. And I also prefer our approach, and I hope that the petitioners will also support our approach. But if our approach doesn't get two-thirds, it's still a goal that the town wants, or that we've heard the town wants. And so, this is a fallback approach for me.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder. Further comment? All right, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. That motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll move directly to the second public hearing of the night. Converted dwellings, A 10-13, another citizen petition, to amend the standards and conditions of Section 3.3241, converted dwelling, to require owner occupancy in all instances, to require screening of associated parking lots, and to establish specific methods of enforcement for violation of the owner occupancy requirement. Will the petitioner please come forward? Ms. Adams?
Maureen Adams, 14 Beston Street, Precinct 10, and a town meeting member. Let me first ask, before I get into my presentation, whether, I know that these have been distributed by Ms. Brestrop some time ago, but I just want to make sure that everyone had a copy because that way I can
We do.
Cut it short, yes. So, let me first say that for us, we're trying to reconcile what seems to be, to us at least, a conflict within the master plan itself. That is, on the one hand, increased density within Amherst Central residential neighborhoods, and on the other hand, preserving the integrity and character of these residential neighborhoods. Our zoning articles are designed to allow increased density, but without sacrificing the attractive qualities of these neighborhoods. So, to move directly to this article, we're proposing to allow for modest increases in density without sacrificing the quality of life. The article mandates that for any properties to be converted into two or more dwelling units, one of the units shall be and shall remain owner occupied. This provides the stability associated with owner occupancy, oversight of tenant behavior, and in the event of disruptive behavior, someone to contact. Now, I wanted to speak briefly about the owner occupancy issue, but before I do, because I forgot to say this with the zoning subcommittee, let me say at first that we are withdrawing, or can withdraw, on the town meeting floor, because we're bound at the moment to the text, Item 10 in this article, because that is redundant to other language that is already in the zoning, in regulations. And we are strongly considering, I could say that I support, deleting Item 12, which seemed onerous, difficult to implement, and might in fact have resulted in the defeat of the article. So, I want to say that right out, so that I can now make the argument for owner occupancy. The argument from our point of view is that the initial purpose of conversion, at least in neighborhoods like ours, would have large houses in the vicinity between, south of the campus, north of town, was to allow owners to convert their homes in order to rent out the other unit. In other words, what we consider to be an excellent idea, which makes large houses in residential districts affordable for families or other residential owners. So, that is something that we think was in the original notion of the conversion, and which we really want to come back to as a primary purpose. So, we want to maintain the residential areas as residential areas, not let them turn exclusively into rental areas. We like the mix that we currently have of students and residents, families, although, as you know from other conversations, we're hoping for greater supervision of some of those houses. But in any event, we know that there is tremendous pressure on these houses by LLCs who want to purchase them for rental use. And we've also observed in recent years that these houses become unaffordable to people who've been able to buy them in the past market, precisely because, as we've noted, the pressure of the LLC purchases is driving up the price of these houses, prices that can be recouped by rental use, but prices that become unaffordable for families who want to move into the neighborhoods. So, we are trying to retain the current character of the neighborhood by making some clear constraints in zoning regulations. You also have heard the data that I'm not going to repeat here. You've heard these presentations, that at least in our area, we have found that owner-occupied rentals are not problem houses. And conversely, that non-owner occupied houses, or let me put it differently, that the problems houses are non-owner occupied, even with the interesting subtlety that an owner occupied house, whose owner moves out of town for several years, becomes a nuisance house until the owner comes back. We understand that this is not empirically validated to our town, but this is a very strong finding in the RG between campus and town. We also have not seen convincing evidence, at least convincing to us, that management plans for rental houses work. We have great hopes for the rental permit process that is being discussed, but it hasn't happened yet, and we can't have confidence in something that we have not seen. We also know that rental houses that are being run by management companies, in some cases, are not being adequately managed and are real nuisances in the neighborhood. And so, for these reasons, we are arguing that for conversions to two or more units, these are going forward, that one of those units remains owner occupied, and that be part of the agreement on the House. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Adams. Mr. Crowder?
So, we had the start of an interesting discussion about this article as well. Again, we were not able to come to any recommendation. In fact, I wasn't, I didn't even have a sense of where we were going to go with it. So, our discussion was preliminary. Unfortunately, it was not complete, so we're going to have to have a discussion here.
Hmm. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
Ms. President, may I make one comment that I
Of course.
Totally forgot.
Mr. Crowder?
And that is that when we compared carefully this Article 17 with Article 14, the focus really narrowed in Article 14 onto Paragraph 6, and in Article 17 into Paragraph 5. In other words, what we noticed in the current Article 14 is that in Paragraph 6, Item B, and I'm holding a warrant that I downloaded from town, it's on page 13, so I don't, I don't know if you're able to follow along from this. But in the Item 6, the board has already said that from one to two units shall be and shall remain owner occupied in residential areas that are not governed by A, A being those neighborhoods that are located in an area that is close to heavily traveled streets, close to business, commercial, and educational districts, or have already developed for multifamily use. In other words, we found that A pretty precisely describes the resident general area as we understand it. And what we want to see in our new Paragraph 5 is that in both cases, A and B, one unit shall be and shall remain owner occupied. So, in effect, I think our, at least in my understanding of it, our Article 17, Paragraph 5 replaces the distinction made in your Article 14, Paragraph 6.
Thank you. That's a nice clarification, Ms. Adams. Ms. Brestrop?
I just wanted to point out something that I mentioned to the zoning subcommittee, which is that this article would affect Amherst College's ability to convert its single-family homes to family homes, because they would be considered conversions, they wouldn't be considered two families, and Amherst College would not be able to occupy the home. So, I'm just pointing that out to you as a, what, fact of this particular zoning amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Brestrop. Mr. Crowder?
So, we started discussing the possibility of building in a waiver somehow, but we didn't come to any conclusions, and it also was not clear whether we would even support that change if it were made, so. So, we have started this discussion, it's not complete.
So, this, this section, we, I'll just recap for the folks at home. A couple of weeks ago, the zoning bylaw, zoning planning board considered a, changes to the same section of the zoning bylaw that were proposed by, proposed by the zoning subcommittee. The planning board recommended those changes nine to zero. The difference that Ms. Adams just brought up does, is technical, but is actually quite important, which mean, in the article currently being proposed, which would be Article 17, the citizen petition, the, there would be a requirement that a converted dwelling be owner occupied. And that is not the case in the planning board version. In the planning board version, there's, it either must be owner occupied, or, and I've lost my place.
16.
It must be located in an area that's close to heavily traveled streets, close to business, commercial, educational districts, or already developed for multifamily use. Right? Okay. Other planning board comments?
Are you looking for general comments, or?
Sure, your questions, yeah. Your questions for the petitioner, anything?
I have no questions. I have some comments, but I'd like to hear what the public input is.
All right, we'll go to the public. Mr. Fox?
I would like to support what Ms. Adams has said, and I don't want to repeat it, so I'll make my comments brief. And here's the argument for including owner occupancy for both categories. First of all, you've recognized in B, where, let's say, the particular area is not close to a busy street, or close to business, it says heavily traveled street, that owner occupancy is required. And that means that you have, in balancing an owner's right to really do what he or she would like to do with their property, with the interests of the neighbors in having a property that is well-managed and cared for and a property that is well-managed and cared for and doesn't involve the nuisance houses. So you've done this balancing, and you've actually said, if you're not close to these particular areas, that you're perfectly prepared to say that owner occupancy makes sense, to balance it that way. So the question is, why not begin with owner occupancy in both categories and consider the waiver? Let me say, it eliminates the problem that the zoning board has to say, well, there's a street that is just over one block, and it's not heavily-trafficked, it's not next to the business district, so we're going to say that that's owner occupancy required. And they're saying, and then you say, one block away, that owner occupancy isn't required. So you create this kind of confusion and judgment as to whether you're close, whether you're heavily-trafficked, which I don't think really the zoning board of appeals in general wants to be able to judge, are they going to send out people that look at the traffic and measure it all? It's pretty impossible, it's an administrative thing. So it seems to me that you've already recognized the merits of owner occupancy in B. It makes sense to recognize it throughout this and say that if owner occupancy really doesn't make sense, and there'll be times when it won't make sense, that the zoning board can say, in this case, we'll waive it, maybe in the case of Amherst College, or whatever it is, to allow them that judgment. But these are pretty artificial distinctions between A and B. And we have, I must repeat, the confidence that owner occupancy has really prevented the problems that everybody in this town knows about and that you are more than familiar with. And we know that the, while the town has tried to improve its enforcement, it's added one person, we have, I think, 3,400 rental units throughout the town, it's going to be a long time between permitting going into effect and having a real significant impact. So this is one way of using the zoning in a sensible way. So I encourage you to, perhaps in a friendly amendment, maybe at the town meeting, or however that occurs, to allow owner occupancy to be a part of this entire Section 5, and I think we'd be most happy to support that, at least I know I would. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. O'Connor, one minute for you, please.
I would appreciate being able to speak for three minutes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. First, I want to say that the planning board's approach, which is to, through the use of 3.321, reduce the level of scrutiny of conversions, has led, and you're about to have a hearing after you hear about these zoning articles, on that same, where you're hearing it under 3.321 rather than on the conversion thing of 3.3241, I think has proved not to be successful. You have entire neighborhoods basically up in arms over what's been going on. My understanding is that one owner is at the verge of wanting to sell an entire, you know, inventory of houses, because he doesn't want to keep appearing before you with, you know, accompanied by large crowds, and have the level of scrutiny that evidently is these, this activity is provoking. I think this approach for this article will have three really positive effects. One, it will provide a level of adult supervision, which is, which the university has determined is absolutely necessary to have student behavior sort of, maybe keep it straight, but maybe not quite narrow, but control it. The second thing it will do is, it will really help affordability, because if only owner occupants can do conversions, then the houses that are, that are large, that can be converted, will remain available to families who can use it to subsidize their mortgage and also to house students. And that brings me to the third option, which is, the planning board has wanted to increase density around the university and the town center, in the general residence and village center zones. And this is the absolutely best way to ensure a positive reaction to that increased density, in the sense that if people know that a converted dwelling from 1 to 2 is going to, going to be and remain owner-occupied, there's going to be a lot greater acceptance, because I think, as the study has shown in Precinct 10, that the outcomes are night and day. And so for those reasons, I would encourage you to support this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Thank you for your thoughtful analysis. We appreciate it. Mr. Farber?
I want to be as brief as I can.
Thank you.
Although I own property in town, I am not a town member, as you know, but I represent a large number of the owners of property who are landlords in the town. Although myself and my clients are totally sympathetic with the concerns and the desires that the petitioners of this article are trying to address, we feel that this is somewhat wrong-headed for a number of, because it is too restrictive in the way it is attempting to approach the control. It basically says it has to be, and only if in certain limited instances will there be a waiver granted. That is not considering what happens with duplexes as to the funding of them. As they've rightly pointed out, that very often, who is purchasing or wanting to convert from a single-family to a duplex is someone who needs the additional income to be able to afford the mortgage. Mortgagees, on the other hand, are not going to grant them if they have restrictions saying that it has to automatically always remain in owner-occupied premises. It will limit the number of choices of banks or mortgagees that are going to be willing to participate in that, especially in areas where we are talking about, in this instance, we are talking about high-trafficked areas, which are exactly the kind of areas which you want to more consider having the density than going into the inner neighborhoods of the community, turning into duplexes. And if you're going to have a restriction, that would make more sense. We believe that the restriction that is being suggested here is just too onerous for it, what would make more sense is to control the behavior aspects relating to the properties to ensure that they are maintained, both visually and not just in sanitary code issues, but we have talked about in the past about establishing restrictions on how the properties have a visual ability to be looked, how many parking spaces, those kind of things that would more control the effects on a overall neighborhood than would be whether it's owner-occupied or not. So we are urging that this is a too-restrictive approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farber. Yes, sir.
Steve Bloom, District 10. First of all, Mr. Farber, I've been here a number of times, is he, can he identify who he represents? He always says he represents various owners, but it'd be nice, you know, he represents a large number of them, it'd be nice to know who they are, just as a note. And secondly...
I'd be more than glad to. It's over 1,500 units, so...
Well, whether it's 1,500 units, it seems like there's a few people that own hundreds of units, so whether it's 1,500, it would be nice to have those people identified. I also find his argument to be very specious in terms of, he seems to be piggybacking on the people that own only one or two units, not the people that we're talking about and trying to prevent the spread of, who own literally hundreds of single-family units. And, but the main thing is that, in terms of the subtext in this thing, the rentals are doing fine in this town, and the rentals that already exist will be grandfathered in without owner occupancy. The thing that you have to protect, we all know we have a problem, we have a police force, medical services that are overstretched, and we have a real problem in this town, and you need to anchor this town with, with single-family owners who are self-policing. And it just seems pretty obvious to me that that's what should be going on, and you should be bending over backwards to stabilize these neighborhoods. The rental, the landlords are doing just fine and will continue to do just fine here. It's the single-family owners that aren't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom.
I, I respect the reasons for these...
Can you, I'm sorry, can you identify yourself, please?
Cindy Jones, Coles, in North Amherst. I respect the reasons for these petition articles, and I regret the cause for these petition articles. And I've been working with a group of Larry Farber's customers, who are on the same side as these neighbors in the neighborhood where I grew up. And we are working hard to address all the concerns there are, and we think we're making progress, and we'd like a little bit more time to do better. What's being proposed seems reasonable when you're in the middle of a horrible situation that's out of control and you're trying to control it. I grew up on the corner of Lincoln and Amity, and my mother still lives there. She was widowed last year, she lives in an enormous house she raised a family in with four outbuildings on three acres, on the corner of Lincoln and Amity. Are you saying that she can't convert her house like Mary Roberts did, the Amherst Funeral Home, and have a couple or several units on three acres in the center of town, and then sell that on the free market to whoever she chooses? Are you really saying you're going to encumber a widow with deed restrictions that will make her property not saleable? I think there are unintended consequences to what's being proposed that even the petitioners wouldn't want to see. And I hope they will withdraw it at town meeting, because we so believe that what they're dealing with is not right, and we want to help fix it. And we will personally, the landlords who are hiring the same security guards these neighbors are hiring, my mother is in their camp, they, she's afraid to call the cops, she thinks there's riots going on, and there are parties across the street at the Amity Horror House. I mean, she lives in that neighborhood. I get it, and I'm dedicated to fixing it, and so are 1,500-unit owners in this town. And I hope we can do it with that regulation. And we're on the same side, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Seeing no further comment from the public. Anything from the planning board? Or Mr. Tucker?
Just a quick note, that we need to bear in mind what all of these articles, both the planning boards and the petitioners' articles are aimed at, and that is, properties with a few numbers of dwelling units, 1 to 3 or so, that maybe include rentals. There are other land use categories, other residential use categories, including apartments, which is 3 to 24 units in a building, townhouses, which are 3 to 10 units in a building, which are possibilities for some of the larger properties. The focus of this is really the smaller properties that are either single families or duplexes now, and may alter or be converted through sale. And that's what the, this whole context of regulation is attempting to address.
What would be the effect if this article, if, you know, this article passes after the proposed Article 14 passes?
If, as represented, that the other elements, Item 10 and 12 dropped out, planning board's article does not propose to amend, in the way is shown, Items 1 and actually, the portion that would be affected would be 6, under the planning board's, if that passed first. It would have the effect that's been described. It would require owner occupancy for all converted dwellings, regardless of the number. In some cases where we have what are identifiably converted dwellings, that do not now have owner occupancy, would create non-conformities, as was pointed out, that those would be grandfathered. That's not necessarily a situation you want to create, if you can avoid it. Other than that, it is principally the issue of owner occupancy that is before you, in terms of its impact.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Ms. Brestrop?
I noticed one other thing, which is that in Paragraph 2 of Article 17, they seem to be going back to, shall not exceed 6 dwelling units in RBC, RG, EG, and BBC. I think...
There's something not amending that.
The planning board had reduced that to 4, so I just wanted to point that out as a difference.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So I'm still struggling with basically a loophole in both of these petition articles, or maybe it's not a loophole, but in the previous petition article, there's basically an exception given to a greenfield, you know, basically building on a clear site. So I own, let's pretend that I own a house, you know, existing nice house in a neighborhood in some, I don't know, I won't name a neighborhood. And I want to get the highest and best use out of it. So I look at the possibility of converting it to a duplex, that's special permit, let's say, go to, get the special permit, I'm denied. So, no, actually, I'm sorry, because I'm converting an existing, if both these passed, it kicks in immediately to converted dwelling, so I have to actually live here in order to do the conversion. It's much, I would favor tearing it down. So in other words, I think we're actually creating an incentive, very strong incentive, actually, for, you know, entrepreneurial landholders to tear down houses, and I think that that's a really unfortunate consequence of a good intention to petitions. So that's really, that's my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Mr. O'Keefe?
I agree with that 100%. That's my most significant reservation about this article. The existence of an absolute requirement that it be owner-occupied gives me a great deal of pause, and it would seem to put up a fairly significant impediment to a lot of specific cases where it might be viable to have a converted dwelling that's not owner-occupied. Ms. Jones named one, Ms. Brestrop named a situation in Amherst College, potentially many situations as another instance of that. And so the idea that you could potentially have a waiver that would allow you to get around that, I'm not sure how that would work, that's certainly not named in the text of the article that we're considering here. And the fact is that we have a mechanism now for doing that type of regulation, which is the special permit process that these all have to pass through. So the ZBA has the ability, when they're considering a conversion permit, to impose conditions. They have pretty broad authority to impose conditions, including a condition that it be owner-occupied, they can and do do that in certain instances. So I think that our existing regulatory mechanisms for letting the ZBA consider, case by case, where it might be appropriate and where it might not be necessary, are the best way of dealing with that, rather than having an absolute prohibition on non-owner-occupied and to-be-defined waiver mechanism that doesn't exist yet for getting around that. The discussion about the need for a waiver mechanism would seem to acknowledge the fact that you do have to look carefully at these and maybe consider cases where it's not required to have owner occupancy, and just the existence of the discussion about the waiver mechanism is, to me, a fairly significant problem with this.
Ms. Adams?
Maureen Adams, Precinct 10, 14 Beston Street. We're obviously dealing with a judgment call of where to draw the line and where to draw the exceptions. When the planning board was designing Article 13 and put in the required... Uh, when the Planning Board was designing Article thirteen and put in the requirements for the special permit granting authority, we asked at that time that owner occupancy at least be put in there as an option. And it was fairly meaningful to me, as I tried to read the town councils, that in Article thirteen, the special permit granting authority shall require the ongoing services of a qualified, we have all the detail about management plans, but we do not have owner occupant as an option. Without having owner occupant as an option, the implication is that it is not one of the options one readily considers in trying to control the out-of-control rentals in our neighborhoods. And so I want to see the language of owner occupancy put somewhere in these zoning regulations because the absence speaks volumes. And I understand the balancing act that we're doing. I'm a property owner as well and I own a house that was at one time a rental and is reverted to single owner and could at some point again be owner occupied as a rental. But we know what happens with owner occupied rentals and we know what can happen with non-owner occupied rentals. And without having owner occupancy anywhere in these zoning regulations tells me that this board is not seriously considering that as an option, nor are you offering that to the zoning board of appeals as a viable option.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. O'Connor?
Very briefly, three items. I, I don't, I don't know whether Mr. Roberts used the, this section of the bylaw to, uh, create the apartments. We don't, I, I don't know that anyone knows that at this point. But I will say that there's a fairly simple way to address the Amherst College situation, uh, very, you know, one or two lines, referring to educational institutions that house their staff or faculty. And, uh, I think that could be easily taken care of. And, um, although I'm, I'm not as concerned about, uh, who the spokesperson, attorney who's speaking for some of the landlords in town, and there are forty-nine hundred rental units and we still have more than fifty percent of the housing in Amherst are rental units. Um, I, I don't know that there really is anyone here who, who is qualified or by any participation to speak for banks. I think that if the banks wanna be spoken for, I think they'll, they'll send a representative. But I do think that, um, you know, um, let, let's leave that item aside.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Yes, ma'am, in the, in the gray jacket.
Gretchen Fox. I live on Fearing Street, a heavily trafficked street. Um, and I live in a neighborhood of very friendly, um, very friendly neighbors. Um, and I want to say that one of the things we want to promote with this article, we don't just want to prevent nuisance houses and their problems, we want to promote our stability and our family neighborhoods. And we found that when, that when rental units are owner occupied, obviously that promotes stability, but it is also the case, and this we have no scientific proof of, but I can tell you from living in the neighborhood, that the people who live in owner occupied houses, those tenants, are much more likely to be long-term tenants. We have one owner occupied duplex in our neighborhood where her, where tenants have been living there for seven years. They're graduate students and they're just leaving and they're like family to her. And this promotes stability in the neighborhood. So we did this also as a way to promote stability and promote, um, moderate income housing and, um, stability of tenants as well as landlords. So owner occupancy promotes both.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. All right, we're running a little short on time here. Was there anyone else in the public wanted to add something new? Uh, Mr. Bloom?
Steve Bloom, District- Is it precinct or district, Tim?
Precinct.
Precinct, okay, sorry. Mr. O'Keefe, do you honestly think the existing protocols are working? That, that's really my question. The ZBA, whatever you're calling, I mean, down the street, the more I live, there's an absentee landlord who's bought, I think, over twenty properties in the past four years, none of whom, none of which are owner occupied, almost all of which, I dare say, are nuisance properties. And I just wanna ask, why for once, why doesn't the town err on the side of full-time residents? And if we get this in place, why can't we, you know, get an effective permitting system in place in, uh, Springtown Meeting? Then we can fold this owner occupancy requirement into that. But I, for the life of me, I don't understand why we're not protecting these neighborhoods, stabilizing these neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. Uh, yes, sir, in the, in the back.
I'm Bob Greeney. Live on McClellan Street, Precinct ten. And, um, one thing that wasn't mentioned, I, I appreciate the daunting task that you're facing in trying to figure out what is best. I think everyone has the same goal in mind, preserving our family-friendly perimeter to the university. Most of us like students. We work with students and we don't mind living around them as long as the atmosphere is family-friendly. And I think it's important to keep in mind as you're deciding what to do, that that number really shouldn't go over probably thirty percent. So on McClellan Street, you have one end of McClellan Street that's kind of been lost. We have the few families that are living there really in tears over their loss. It, it, it seems like it's not gonna come back. It's just too many students. And a lot of those houses are well-managed. So it's some percent, even a well-managed house destroys the character of the neighborhood. We're at the other end of McClellan where it's at about the thirty percent. And it works. It's working. And, but if it goes the, that other way, and, and, and then you're in that place where it's sixty percent, seventy percent students and you're gonna sell your house, a family doesn't wanna buy the house. So it's hard to bring it back once it's lost. And also, when a developer renovates a house, it, it might be a different renovation than when a, than a homeowner renovates a house. So it's renovated in a way that doesn't really welcome, uh, the kind of situation where a family lives in one section and some students or grad students or even undergraduate students live in the other. So I, I don't know the answers and I, I, I think you face a very difficult task, but keep that idea in mind as well.
Thank you, Mr. Greeney. Yes, ma'am.
Name is Jennifer Taub, also Precinct ten. I'll be brief. I just wanna piggyback on what Mr. Greeney said, that nothing is gonna hurt the stability and the character and the ability of, uh, homeowners to sell their home to another family than having a block go beyond that tipping point of thirty percent. If you're next door to basically a party animal student house or across the street or anywhere in the vicinity, you are not selling your property, except perhaps to another, you know, absentee landlord that's gonna turn that into a student house. But we feel now on Lincoln Avenue, as just one example, that there's a landlord and it's like a cancer moving down the block. And that would just be terrible to lose an entire block from many blocks, from the university to Amity, because the three hundred block of Lincoln is just about gone because this person has already purchased two or three houses that have become party houses and in disrepair. And so no family is gonna buy a house on that block and it's moving down the street. So it's really, um, destroying not only the character of the neighborhood, but it's ruining the values, which is not in anybody's well-being anywhere in Amherst.
Thank you, Ms. Taub. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Patricia Stacy. I live in Precinct ten. I lived in Northampton for, um, twenty years. Moved to, um, Lincoln Avenue, near the corner of Lincoln and Fearing. Um, I, I have to say that I was very innocent of what's been happening in that neighborhood when I moved in. Moved in, in Au- the beginning of August with my son. And, um, every day for a month, he told me it was the most beautiful house and neighborhood he's ever lived in and kept talking about this was gonna be our family legacy. When the students came back, we loved seeing them jogging on the streets and, um, I was thrilled with the traffic, actually, I really was, just the, seeing all the young people. When the parties began, there were, um, three nights in a row that we couldn't sleep and we were up several times a night. And the sounds, I have to say, are terrifying. It sounds like someone is trying, is going to hurt someone. Um, and my son began begging me to move back to Northampton in tears. Then every day, begging me to move back to Northampton. Weekend after weekend, not sleeping, the scary sounds, um, the trash. Uh, I mean, it's, the, the term nuisance is inappropriate. The term unsafe, unsavory, unwholesome, um, not a, a neighborhood, not neighborhood-friendly. So I'm extremely concerned about this. We have a moral obligation to the people on that corner who live there, who pay taxes, but we have a moral obligation to the students who are getting hurt, they're getting poisoned, there, there are ambulances involved, and there are no adults being supervised. Our taxes are going to taking care of them. Meanwhile, there are people living out of town, perhaps even out of state or one day out of the country, who are making a fortune off of the misfortune of my neighborhood, my son, and I'd say the whole university population at large. Something needs to be done. This is a moral obligation. It's not just a matter of, let's have some good business and let's make some money here for some businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Yes, ma'am. We have time for a couple more people.
My name's Priscilla White and I live on, uh, three eighteen Lincoln Ave, Precinct ten. I've been in this house for ten years and, um, this is an owner, this is, um, I bought the house as a single-family home ten years ago and, um, came to the zoning board of appeals when my daughter and her husband and their children were looking for a place to live. And so we came and got approval for a supplemental apartment in the back. So we have, um, what a lot of you have been talking about tonight, an owner occupied home, um, with the supplemental apartment. And up until June of this year, um, it's been a wonderful place to live. You know, some nights it's noisy, especially in September and May, but, you know, we, we learn to live with that. I'm a graduate of UMass. I work at the Fisher Home Hospice in North Amherst, so I feel very grounded in Amherst, um, from my student days and also as my current living situation and work situation. However, in June, when, um, a landlord, an out-of-town absentee landlord bought the house next to me and the house across the street from me and the house on the corner, our whole life has so changed that we don't even recognize our home anymore as our home. There's noise constantly of cars coming and going and coming and going and loud in the driveway, out of the driveway. I try to think like on a, I mean, on a weekday night at two o'clock and three o'clock in the morning, the students are still coming and going and coming and going and our houses are, you know, they're kind of close together. I've tried sleeping on one side of the house, I've tried sleeping on the other side of the house. There are parties. Next door to me was supposed, was a single-family home and, um, it was supposed to only have four unrelated adults in it. I was told by the mother of one of the students moving in that six were moving in. One was in the dining room, one was in the attic, two were in this bedroom, um, and they were drawing lots to who would get the attic, who would get the dining room. And the, two weeks ago, there was a party of forty people all night in that house. It went till eight-thirty the next morning. When I opened the blinds at six to see, like, why are they still partying at six-thirty in the morning? There were students urinating on the bushes facing me when I put the blind up. It's, it's so beyond what I ever imagined could happen. I mean, I just couldn't imagine that an LLC could buy hot homes next to me across the street. Across the street, this is an owner occupied property and the landlord has misrepresented to the town that he lives there. The students living there told me that he has a fake bedroom set up that is supposedly his bedroom and when the inspectors come, that the students are to tell the inspectors that that's where he lives and he's got his family photographs in there and he does not live there. We've gotta be able to have something to take care of these kinds of takeovers of our neighborhood. This, you know, this is, I'm just an ordinary person trying to live an ordinary life. My daughter feels like she can't live in the front anymore because they can never sleep. They just, you know, are, it's, there's people coming and going. And what we spend our lives doing now is thinking, should we call the management company? Should we call the landlord? Should we call the police? Have we reached the threshold where it's loud enough? Is just being awake enough of a threshold to call? And just the quality of what has happened in a few months by one landlord coming and buying these three properties, I can't impress upon you. We need to do something, I implore you, to consider, um, are these homes that we're trying to continue to live in and are unregulated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Okay, in the interest of time, I think we may want to, um, move towards closing the public hearing and deciding whether we're gonna recommend this to town. Mr. Gruber?
Oh, go ahead. Before we close the public hearing, I have a question, if I may, of, of Ms. Adams. By way of clarification, or tell me if I missed something or I'm incorrect here. I believe you commented that you were advocating mandatory language about owner occupancy and that Article thirteen didn't have it. Um, looking at Paragraph six in Article thirteen, which looks to me like it's pretty mandatory. It, uh, it's, there are a bunch of shalls in there, requirements, if I may, requirements of the Special Permit Granting Authority, which would be the ZBA. They shall approve and, under certain conditions, one of which would be a conversion from one to two units, which shall be and shall remain owner occupied. Were you referring to something else?
No. Um, my understanding, and I feel that we're getting into very important literary exegesis here, is that the shall be and shall remain owner occupied, I read as referring only to B and not to A. And I think a way around this, if the Planning Board so considers, would be to substitute our Paragraph five from Article seventeen for your Paragraph, uh, six in Article fourteen. What we want is the owner occupancy to refer both to conditions A and B.
So condition A would be if it's just a single unit with, say, for example, four unrelated people, that it should still be owner occupied?
Uh, the conversion, we're talking about conversions from- The conversion, we're talking about conversions from one to two or three units.
Okay.
That's my understanding of the definition of conversion.
Okay.
Which would mean that there would be two or three units, both in A and in B. The distinction between A and B being the location of the conversions, close or distant from traffic, business, et cetera.
Well, I guess it's a matter of interpretation, whether I would agree with your reading of it, I guess. But thank you very much for the clarification.
I think what we tried to do in ours was to make the owner occupancy a separate sentence, which referred back to A and B, rather than a subset of the B language.
That's very clear, Ms. Adams. Thank you. Ms. Kruger?
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second. Further discussion on closing the public hearing? All in favor? Thank you. And thanks very much to everyone who came to comment. We're going to move into planning board deliberations, if any, on whether to, based on the, what we've heard about the article tonight, to recommend it, whether to recommend it to town meeting. Is there any comments from the board on this? Mr. Crowder?
So I came here with one idea. That idea is changing. So part of the problem that I have is that, going back to our discussion of converted dwellings, that I think the converted dwelling use is weird. I understand where it came from, but it's difficult. It seems to be too inflexible. You can't change from a converted dwelling to anything else. A converted dwelling is converted forever. So, 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 once you, once you put a set of conditions on it, those conditions are always there, even if the use changes. And so the approach that we're taking is, is if the use changes, then the conditions change. And so I would, I would prefer to be able to do that with converted dwellings. And I don't think that this quite does it, but I would like to be able to do it. So I think I'm, I would like to be able to do something now, but it's too late. So I would be leaning towards suggesting a referral of this, and then really addressing it in some way, and bringing it back in the spring, with some way that there's, there's a suggestion that a condition could be, owner occupancy may be required. That's, that seems like one step. Or there might be other ways of doing it so that we're trying to prefer, we're trying to encourage, we're trying to make preferential owner occupancy, but not necessarily have it be a requirement. I'm not sure what to do right now.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder. Mr. Carson?
I just had a clarification. Are you meaning to refer back just Article 14, our Article 14, or their article?
Theirs.
Their article, okay.
Mr. Schreiber?
Do you have, okay.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Carson.
I was going to recommend we continue with our Article 14, but to change the paragraph 6 to read with the language from the petition article about making it a requirement to be owner-occupied, using the language that they use in their number 5.
Mr. Tucker?
I believe that would be outside the scope of our article. You would need to have some sort of layered.
I suppose we could limit our approval of this, of this article to paragraph 5.
Good.
Which would accomplish the same thing. Yes, Ms. Ford?
I just, it's a clarification, again, that anything that gets approved here only applies to new units moving forward, so that all the units that exist out there right now that may be problem units would get grandfathered the way they are. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Ms. Kruger?
I'm just, I'm struggling with having these sort of dueling or converted dwelling bylaw proposals on the same warrant, and trying to see how, if we could sort of combine. My main objection to the petition article when it was originally submitted was the section 12, that I didn't think worked at all, but maybe Mr. Rosney was going in this direction, but my reading of 6 had always been that we were two area, two ways you could do a conversion. You were either meeting the standard of A, being near a heavily-traveled street, et cetera, et cetera, or if it was one to two, that could happen anywhere in town, in where it says, comma, shall be made as owner-occupied, comma, which shall be made a condition of any social permit issued in such an instant. I just kind of assumed it applied to both instances. So if that's what we thought, and it sounds like the remedy that people are suggesting is to just change the language to make that clear grammatically, I don't think that's outside of the scope of the article.
To clarify what you meant?
Grammatical clarification, because I always thought that that requirement applied to both A and B. We're just describing two different types of situations that could be converted. That was, that had been my understanding for a long, way back. Because we, I don't think we focused on 6, and correct me if my memory is failing. When we were, had our public hearing and our discussions around this, we didn't zone in on that as possibly an issue for people, and now we have a chance to decide how we feel about it. Maybe that would eliminate this sort of dueling converted dwelling bylaws.
Mr. Tucker?
The interpretation that Ms. Adams put on what is now Item 5 is correct, and Ms. Brester agrees with me, that the owner occupancy requirement only applies to conversions from one to two units. It doesn't apply automatically to conversions of whatever number that occur in areas close to heavily-traveled streets, close to business, and so forth. That's simply sort of a threshold way of establishing where conversions are encouraged to occur. It is probably the intent originally that they would capture areas outside of those areas with B, but in those areas, it would be only from one to two units. And in those areas, because they were not in areas where you would expect to have rental units, they were requiring owner occupancy. But, so it's more complex, and it's sort of both and all of them. I don't know what you wish to do about that. In this case, the proposal by the petitioners would change the meaning. They intend to have owner occupancy in all cases, period.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Well, we have, we have three choices as a planning board. We can recommend this to town meeting, actually, I guess, really, four. We can recommend it to town meeting, we can, I suppose, recommend it in part, we can refer it back to the petitioner for further work, or we can recommend against it. Does anyone on the planning board have a sort of a possible motion they want to make on any of those possibilities? Mr. Carson?
I'd like to move that we would recommend paragraph 5 in the petition article.
Paragraph 5 being?
Requiring owner occupancy.
I'll second that.
Can we have a motion that's been moved and seconded? Discussion, Mr. O'Keefe?
I can't support that motion. That's precisely the aspect of the article that I disagree with, and so I would be in favor of a motion to refer and give it further study and give it back to the ZSE for further work, but I could not support anything that included support for paragraph 5.
I'm still not clear what the existing language, my interpretation of the existing language in condition 5 was that if the, if the use was not, if it is a conversion in a residential district, it was not close to a heavily-traveled street and so on, then it could only be from one to two units, one of which should be owner-occupied.
Yes.
That's what I thought it was.
Yes.
Yeah. I think it's a stretch to read it any other way.
Yeah.
Okay. So in that case, it is a significant change.
Yes.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor. Any, I hear Mr. Keefe, O'Keefe saying he's not going to support it. Any further comment on it? If not, we'll come to a vote. All in favor of the, Mr. Carson's motion to recommend paragraph 5 only? That's three in favor. Four opposed, five opposed. The motion fails. Do we have another motion?
Excuse me. Can I see who? I have to tell who it is. Wait, I thought there were five.
Are we, you're looking for opposed, correct?
I'm looking for opposed, five.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Thank you.
He opposed it before.
Yes, Mr. Crowder?
I move to recommend referral of this article to the planning board for further work.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
May I just ask a question?
Yes.
That would be, then, you'd wait until the Springtown meeting for that?
Unfortunately, yes. I would like to do it now, but we can't.
Do you want to make that part of the motion? The time, a timeline for it?
I'm reluctant to put a timeline on things.
So can you repeat your motion, please?
I move that the planning board recommend referral of this article back to the planning board for further work.
To the planning board?
Yes. No, to the planning board. I think we should work on it. I think, I think it has worthy goals.
All right. And that was the motion that you seconded, Ms. Kruger? All right. The first motion failed. Do we have any further discussion on the second motion? Mr. Rosney?
Doesn't this, doesn't this send a mixed message to town meeting that if we have our article, I think it's Article 13?
14.
14, thank you. That then when we come to this, there's, it's been referred back, I mean, let's presume Article 14 passes, then if this is referred back, it just seems to send a mixed message to me. Yeah.
Mr. Crowder?
That's fine. That's, that's exactly right. What we're saying is that our article perhaps is not complete. Our article is the first step, this is the second step, or something. So I don't think that's in conflict at all.
I agree. Mr. O'Keefe?
I agree with that interpretation also. I think if Article 14 passes, then this could be reconsidered in the context of Article 14 having passed, and would be better considered in that, in that context. It's important for all of us to remember that this article is not the solution to the student behavior problems that we're having in town. The student behavior problems are, go far beyond zoning as a broad, the student behavior problems go far beyond what zoning can cover at all, and they certainly go far beyond what can be covered in the context of an article about the technical aspects of how converted dwellings are regulated. So I don't want people to go away with the understand, or with the impression that this is a choice between Article 17 and doing nothing. The fact is that even from a zoning perspective, we have been working for a very long time, but we've been working intensely this fall, to bring articles to Fall Town Meeting that are on the warrant and will be considered, that are intended to address the exact same issues that people have been describing here tonight. We're well aware of the fact that this is a major problem in town. Nobody is saying that it's not. And so we've been working hard to try to come up with articles that address them. Our articles are not the final solution to that either. So I think some of the reluctance about this article has centered on the technical zoning aspects of it, and I think rightly so. I mean, that's my opinion, anyway. I don't think that we should adopt something that is flawed just because we feel the need to do something. The fact is that we are doing a lot of things, and we need to keep in mind all the things that are going on. So, sorry to go on a bit long there, but that's my way of saying that I will definitely support the motion to refer.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. I think that's well said and well taken, Mr. O'Keefe.
Thank you.
And, yeah, these are a series of steps forward in the context of zoning only. Further discussion in the planning board? All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. All in favor? Were there any abstentions? Thank you.
No, there's a point of information. Should be a practical question.
Please do. You could come to the mic.
Ryan Adams, Precinct 10. I take it that the planning board or the zoning subcommittee continues to meet, and I'm wondering whether what you have offered, that is by way of referral at this point in time, is something that we could work out prior to the Fall Town Meeting? Because I think the cries of despair that you heard in the audience had to do with waiting yet again till spring.
I can speak to that, Ms. Adams. The, the rule about presenting articles to town meeting, and anyone on town meeting can correct me on this, is that an article can be amended after it's been placed on the warrant to do less than it currently does, but it can't be amended to do more. So in other words, the planning board can't amend its Article 14 to include this requirement because that would be more, doing more than the current article does. The citizen Article 17 could be amended to do less than it currently does. Is that correct, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, yes.
And 17 could also be proposed, because it is.
Yes.
Yes.
It certainly can. And it will be. Mr. Tucker?
If I may, speaking just for the staff, it's part of our job to provide zoning assistance to anyone under any circumstance, and we would be happy to continue working with the petitioners to see if there are ways in which you might wish to modify Article 17 to perhaps address some of the concerns of the planning board, or for whatever reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. All right. In the interest of time, I think we're going to move to our public hearing at this, the next procedural question. Mr. Fox, please come to the microphone.
At the town meeting, there were a request to modify your Article 14. Could the planning board, in advance, and you'd have the material, could the planning board take a position on that that would be more acceptable to you, looking at your Article 6? In other words, a motion from the floor that would ask for the planning board's approval of an amendment? In other words, it's not a written amendment that you've approved, but would you accept a modification?
The modification would need to do, the modification to Article 14 would need to do less.
Would do?
It would need to be less restrictive than the current Article 14.
I see. So it would only be less, it could only be if it's less restrictive?
Correct.
I see, okay. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our next public hearing. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised. Notice has been posted in the town hall and sent to a butters. This hearing is being held to provide opportunity for interested citizens to be informed about and comment on the proposed site plan. This is Site Plan 42 Shumway Street, brought by KH Amherst LLC, SPR 2013 00004/M15477. The applicant is requesting site plan review approval to create a two-family dwelling by constructing a new four-bedroom, two-story unit behind the existing house and connecting the two structures with an enclosed foyer breezeway pursuant to Section 3.321 of the zoning bylaw. This is map 14B, parcel 202. This is Map 14B, Parcel 202 in the RG zoning district. Someone here from K. H. Amherst LLC?
Yes, Tom Reedy from Bacon Wilson on behalf of K. H. Amherst LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy. Is anyone a member or a manager of K. H. Amherst LLC here tonight?
No.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you. Again, good evening. Tom Reedy, an attorney with Bacon Wilson here in Amherst. With me this evening is Carlos Nieto, Berkshire Design. He's going to be doing a majority of the presentation. It's, we're here on an application pursuant to 3.321, two-family detached dwelling, addition of a single new dwelling unit to an existing single family such that a two-family detached dwelling is created. It is permitted by right in the general residence district with Site Plan Review. And with that, I'll let Mr. Nieto take over.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy.
Good evening. My name is Carlos Nieto.
You'll have to come take the mic. If you'd like, you can take it off the stand and walk around with you.
Good evening. My name is Carlos Nieto. I'm a landscape architect with the Berkshire Design Group, and I'm being asked to come and present the project for the LLC, K. H. Amherst LLC. I would like first to start off with existing conditions on the, on the site. Currently, currently the building exists on the parcel. It's a one-story, single-family home with an attached garage. It currently has a existing driveway, grassy area on the, on the backyard. Further out on the backyard, there's an area, wooded area, wetland area. I'd like to continue by just showing the proposed project, which is the addition of a new unit that would house four bedrooms. It would be connected by a breezeway to the existing garage and the existing house. As part of the Site Plan Review, we've, we are trying to, we are proposing the addition of six parking spaces to accommodate for this new unit that's going to be added to the site. Four of those parking spaces are portrayed here on the north, two of them on the south, and then two more parking spaces are proposed to be within the existing garage the way they exist right now. The idea is that they will be within one parking space per bedroom for a total of eight parking spaces. Part of the, as part of the application, we've requested a certain number of waivers, one of them being the lighting plan. We are proposing that the lighting is going to happen right on the garage and on the side entrance to the proposed unit, and that those would be just only tenant-controlled lights. There won't be any other types of site lighting or parking lighting that were here. So that's why we've been requesting that waiver. Also, a waiver for no sign plan because the, of course, it doesn't require a sign, the project, the way that we are proposing. Third waiver we are, we've been requesting is a traffic impact statement waiver. The use is going to be as, I would say, not as, there won't be a terrible impact to the traffic in the area for, for what we are proposing for the eight parking spaces and four extra units. The other, the last waiver we've been asking is a waiver for the allowed, the way the bylaw would allow for two parking spaces within the front setback of the property, the way that we are proposing the parking area, there will be 2.5 parking spaces within the setback, meaning there will be half a parking space that will be within the front setback, and we were asking a waiver for that so that we could provide the number of parking spaces required by the zoning bylaw. And going back to existing conditions, part of the proposal was to, in addition to, we're adding in addition to have four new units, also was the rehab, rehab of this existing unit. What you're seeing here are the conditions before the applicant actually bought the property and started working on it. And this is the difference, the applicant has put a certain amount of effort to actually make the house look good. Originally, it was extremely overgrown, especially in the backyard and also in the front yard. And as you can see in the after pictures, the applicant has, in addition to just dealing with the landscape, he has also repainted the house, re-washed, and really revamped this property, which was not in the best conditions as it was. As part of the project and beyond what you've just seen of what the rehab was, the applicant is also proposing adding plantings to the front area of the house, also adding screen planting for the parking spaces, one through four, proposing also a solid fence screen from the neighbor for those four parking spaces as to prevent any light from the cars actually going into the neighbor's property. One last item that the, is being proposed at the moment, it is a new concrete patio. Right now, the existing backyard only has a small area of concrete patio, and he's proposing to actually increase that area to make it a, you know, a better, better that Now, I would like to go in through what the actual units would look like. I'll leave, I'll come back to you after builders are going to be showing what the units are going to be within and outside.
My name's Dan Newberry. I'm with The Home Store, which is the modular company that we're proposing. The new addition in the back is a modular home. The siding on the existing house has been redone, painted. The existing house we've done, matched the same color. The house was painted to match the same color of the addition in the back. You can see by the, the way we've added the addition in the back, we took a lot of time to be careful to make sure that from the road, it has nice curb appeal. And when you look at it, it looks like a, a single house, because I know that's where the Town of Amherst is looking to go to. We had tried changing different ways of adding and doing it, and it just doesn't look. It looks like it's stuck on. So this particular layout works very well because it follows what we were told to go after when we met earlier, to try to give it the appearance of looking as it was a single-family unit. And so the, the design, this would be very energy-efficient home, would have all the latest windows installation. So again, it would be a very energy-efficient house to add on to this existing structure. So I don't know if there's any questions of the construction or whatever, but that's how we ended up with the, trying to come up with the idea of where to place the house.
Okay, thank you. I missed your last name, by the way.
Newberry.
Thank you.
N-E-W-B-E-R-R-Y. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry.
Following this description of the site and the building that's going to be added to, I also wanted to go through some of the items on the management plan. The proposed, where the proposed trash is going to be, you're proposing that the trash will, will be contained within the existing garage. It is a pretty big garage that would be able to house trash receptacles inside instead of having them outside. Landscaping will be taken care of by the management, and also it will be going on as, once a month during the growing season, and then there will be two separate periods where landscape maintenance would happen, will be in spring and fall. In addition, in any other moment where the need for landscaping would happen, the owner is, is suggesting that he would go in and also do, so not, even if it's once a month, there might be need to go in and do landscaping. He will be going in and doing landscaping before that. The last items I wanted to talk about was, it was, Mr. Jason Skiles had some comments from Department of Public Works in regards to the project. In this case, we're talking about 12 items that he talked about, and I wanted to go one by one and, and say what, we've given him preliminary answers to his comments. He hasn't answered back on what his take on those answers are, but I wanted to put those forward to you. So one of the first questions he asked is, existing sewer service should be video inspected or abandoned at the sewer main? We are answering that the applicant will video inspect the sewer service before construction, so we're acknowledging his comment, number one. Number two, he's, comment is that flowable fill is required for all trenches under the existing pavement. The applicant will use flowable fill for trenches under existing pavement, so he's acknowledging the use of flowable fill for any type of trenching. The proposed driveway width and radii are graded in the DPW standards allowed. The, our response to that is that what the applicant is suggesting to do with the driveway and the curb cut is to repay, resurface it. So we're leaving actually the curb as it is right now and those curb radii as they stand right now. The only addition of new pavement will be just for the parking spaces. There will be a resurfacing of the existing driveway as it exists and then addition to the, to the parking spaces. The proposed driveway will severely damage the roots of an 18-inch maple. Originally, on the plans that you had in front of you, there was an existing 18-inch maple within the property that would have been damaged by parking number five. So we've made revisions to the plan, showing, not showing that, that tree, and showing it as part of being, of being demolished or being taken away. So there's a question on where would the plows would push snow in the winter, and the suggestion is that the front area of the, of the property has enough space to actually accommodate for the snow.
Where's that at, sorry?
Sorry?
Could you do that again?
Yeah, that the front yard area of the, of the property right now would be more than enough to accommodate for moving of, of the snow from the parking lot and plowing. Also, some of the area could be between the side, back entrance sidewalk to the back unit and the existing garage, so there is space to, to plow the snow.
Sorry. Could you do that one more time? I mean, a little bit more slowly, showing where the street goes?
Yes. The, we're, we're proposing that the snow being plowed would, would go into the front yard of the property, part of it from the parking lot, and then part of it could go in between the garage, existing garage, and the back entrance sidewalk, and that that would provide enough space for the snow to be plowed up. The six, number six would be the proposed screen plantings are within the town roadway, and yes, the, this, because of the arrangement of the parking spaces as they are, we are proposing to be putting those screen plantings on the edge of the roadway, right, and right next to those parking spaces. They are grading at two parking spaces within the front setback limit, and I, I talked about that on the waiver that we were requesting, which is basically instead of two parking spaces, we would, we would have two and a half parking spaces. Half of number two would be within the front setback, and we were requesting a waiver for, to be, to allow that. No screening is proposed for parking five and six, and at this point, we were not showing any screening for parking five and six. We thought that the, would, screening towards the neighbor's house would, would be much more important on this side because it, it blocks all the lights from those parking, from those cars that would be parking. Not so on, on the five and six, that there is enough vegetation existing on the side that that wouldn't be an issue. There's a question, number nine. Parking space number six appears to be less than five feet from the house. The parking, he is mentioning is this parking space right here, and I think he, he might have not gotten confused a little bit with the graphic, but the, from the actual wall of the building, there would be at least six feet. There is a one and a half or almost one, one and eight-inch overhang on the existing building, and if you're, if he was going by that, we will be at 4.5 feet. So my understanding is that it would be more than five feet from the wall of the existing Number 10, the proposed 1.5 HDP drain line will severely impact the roots of 16-inch and a 24-inch maple, both of which are public shade trees, and he's requesting a public shade tree hearing. Again, we've acknowledged his comment, and to prevent, prevent the damage, and the two trees that Mr. Skiles is mentioning are, are these two trees right, right here. Originally, there was a drain line that would go from the basement drain sump pump. We were showing it go into a catch basin rear on the south, right next to the tree. What we've, as a revision, taking that comment into consideration is to add a new catch basin right at the edge of the parking, parking area and driveway as to be able then to connect the drain from the basement to that catch basin. In addition, it would also catch any runoff that would, the parking has to be graded in such a way that it would grab any runoff that comes out of the parking lot, making even more efficient the drainage in that area. And in that way, not impacting any of the two existing trees and not having to have a separate hearing for that. The foundation subdrain pump is not spec, this is number 11. The foundation subdrain pump is not specified. DPW will require pump specifications as a middles, and the applicant will provide pump specifications as a middles prior to construction. The grading for the proposed drainage swale on the northeast side of the proposed unit extends beyond the limit of the erosion control barrier. What he's referring to is a swale on, on the north side of the property. And again, originally, graphically, there was a, in, in your package, there was a line where the erosion control line was about three or four feet within the area of grading. We've moved that back so that any grading will be cat, caught, or any erosion from, happening from that grading will be caught by the erosion control barrier. One last thing I wanted to add was that this project also has been in front of the Conservation Commission already and was approved for the permit because of the wetland resource area. And from the order of conditions from CONCOM, we added, it was, it was requested from us to have a fencing and signage as to not allow any intrusion into the wetland area and the buffer area on the back, and that is being added to these plans as requested by the Conservation Commission. And then the second thing I wanted to add right at the end is that also this project has been through the architectural review process, and, and it was approved or accepted. And the arrangement of the property, of the unit and also the breezeway was accepted as a reasonable architectural feature. So you have, now I'm opening to any questions that you have for us.
Was there any more applicant presentation to be made? Thank you. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Reedy before we get started.
R-E-I-D-Y.
Reedy? Reedy?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Can you please tell us who the principal of KH Amherst LLC is, please?
Yeah, you know, I don't have the organizational documents in front of me, but upon information and belief, and I would ask Mr. Nieto.
Mr. Youpan.
Mr. Youpan Zhang, yes.
Youpan Singh.
T Z E N G.
Thank you. And where does Mr. Singh reside?
I don't know. I think he has 321 Lincoln Ave. I believe he has many of the, I think he has, he has, I believe he has indicia of ownership from 321 Lincoln Ave. I don't know what the organizational documents say, though, candidly.
I see. And we've had some, some representations from, from citizens that he actually doesn't live there and that he's in violation of his special permit for that property. Do you have any information about that?
I do not. I think that is being taken care of or discussed, at least, with the building commissioner in the town of Amherst.
My question being that if the representations of Mr. Singh about his existing rental properties are not correct, how can we believe the representations in your application?
I mean, I don't know how you'd expect me to answer that question. We submit this application, Mr. Nieto submits this application on behalf of the applicant with the understanding that everything in here is true and accurate to the best of our knowledge.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that said, I think we should go through the development application report that was prepared by staff.
Actually, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Crowder.
The, the exist, how does the garage connect to the house right now? Is there, is there an entrance from the garage to the house?
Yes, there is.
And so the, the, the new breezeway would be accessed by either or both units?
Yes.
Okay. And?
If you want me to, basically, there will be, there's a door, front door, which could be the main ingress to the back unit behind the garage. There's also an interior door that connects to the breezeway from the existing building that connects also to the garage through, so those would be, there's a secondary, secondary entrance to the back unit.
So that would be considered a secondary entrance, not the main entrance? The main entrance would be through the breezeway?
Through the breezeway.
Something else, Mr. Crowder?
Not yet.
Okay. Looking at this project from the staff report, the, did we, I don't have the site visit report in front of me. Was someone who was there like to report on it or?
There is one here. There's one in the package.
Oh, thank you. I must have missed it.
Just hand it out.
It appeared on your desk this evening.
Okay. Somehow it wasn't in my file. Thank you. Okay. There was a site visit held on Monday at 4:00 PM. Board members observed the following. The property is near, well, we know where it is. It's made up of smaller homes that date from the mid-1900s and earlier, mostly one- and two-story structures, and it's in walking distance of stores and businesses along College Street. It's a flat site with the house towards the front of the property. There's two mature maple trees in front within the town right-of-way and another one near the driveway on the south side, proposed to be removed. There's a walkway of concrete pavers. The rear yard is large and flat with a wetland to the east and a small concrete patio and staircase. There's little, if any, site lighting on the property and no plans to add any lighting except for security lights at the entryways. The existing building is a one-story wood frame, one-story wood frame ranch house mid-1900s, sided with cedar shingles. The windows are new with white trim. It's been recently painted, and work is planned to replace a gutter at the end of the house. Front and storm doors are both new. It sits a few feet above the surrounding ground. There's a set of stairs to access the front and back doors and a two-car garage on the north side. The proposal includes a new dwelling unit. We've heard this already. Parking spaces and a fence added on the north side, and the rest of this has been addressed already. Okay.
There was a reference to review by the design review board. Do we have that report?
I apologize for not having written anything about the design review board review, but there is a little write-up in the development application report, and Ms. Ford was at the design review board meeting, so she probably could report on this.
Would you like to report on that, Ms. Ford?
I can say, I just, excuse me. I just read the, the review, and this kind of sums it up. I mean, we, we were presented with two options. We encouraged them to consider the second configuration, which is what's been presented tonight. We expressed a lot of concern about the discrepancy between, or, or, you know, asked them to consider the discrepancy between the difference in massing between the two-story and the one-story. And, you know, it was made clear that, that, you know, there was no way to do what they wanted to do unless it was a two-story structure, given the limitations of the wetlands and so on. So, given that, we went on to encourage them to consider using materials and window proportions to at least allow for it to look like it was all the same structure as opposed to two separate structures, which it's not clear that they've done that, but that was, that was something that we asked them to consider because we didn't get very clear. At that point, there were not developed elevations or clear delineation in materials. So this is the first time we're seeing it tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
So can I ask you a question, just a procedural question?
Please speak into the mic.
I'm sorry. So I'm, just a procedural question because this is maybe our second one of this type of, at least at the time I've been on the board. And the last time, we asked her to be referred to the design, my question is, why was it, why did the design review board take a look at this?
The applicant asked for the design review board to review this to give him input on the layout of the buildings with respect to each other. He was presented with the fact that the town is considering changing the zoning bylaw to require that buildings be, that duplex have the two units sort of butted up against one another. And he couldn't come up with a good solution that he felt good about, or he had an architect who was also working with him. Neither of them felt good about that type of solution. They felt better about the solution with the breezeway. So he presented both solutions to the design review board and asked for input about that and then was hoping that the DRB would transmit that referral or recommendation to you, the recommendation being that this, of the two layouts that were presented to them, this layout was the preferred one because the other one made it look like two different buildings. Now, you have not asked the DRB to review this application, and you could ask them to review this application now that there's more information. So this was an informal review that happened prior to, I think it even happened prior to them submitting an application to you.
Thank you, Ms. Brestrow. Okay. The applicant has requested four waivers, to waive the requirement for a lighting plan, to waive the requirement for signage plan, waive a traffic impact statement, and to waive the parking requirements under section 7.0002 of the zoning bylaw. Issues identified by staff is that that section of the bylaw requires that there be a maximum of two cars allowed to be parked in the front setback of any property, and the plan shows there are two and a half cars. Alternatively, the board may wish to eliminate one of the parking spaces and approve seven spaces. Section 7.104 of the zoning bylaw authorizes the planning board to allow up to 50% of parking spaces to be compact spaces, eight by 16 feet. The plan shows that the four spaces proposed, the north side of the driveway, are nine by 14. The board may wish to consider allowing these spaces to be compact parking spaces. Lighting, the applicant's planning to install tenant-controlled wall fixtures, that each means of egress, ingress, and no other external, exterior lighting is proposed. We should consider whether additional lighting is necessary for driveway and walkways, requiring that it be downcast and not shine onto adjacent properties. And to require location, if we do require additional lighting, that locations and catalog information be submitted. The erosion control plan has been approved by the Conservation Commission, although there was an issue identified by the engineer, which the applicant has commented on. We haven't, let's see, the applicant states that the traffic impact statement should be waived because the traffic increase will be negligible for the proposed residential use. This is covered by 11.247 of the zoning bylaw, which states that we have the discretion to waive the requirement for a traffic impact statement. There's actually, we come to signs. At the time that this, this report was prepared, no signs were proposed. However, signs are now currently required by the CONCOM to be placed before the wetland. So the, as I said, they're requesting a waiver of the sign plan, but there will be signage. Management plan has been submitted. Lease, proposed lease has been submitted. The fire department has not yet submitted a report. However, the building commissioner stated the new unit will need to be sprinklered and maybe the existing one. We have a submission from the CONCOM, the engineer. We may, and as far as architecture, we may wish to inquire about, inquire about materials to be used for roofing, siding, trim, and windows. And then the design review principles are applicable in this case because it's in the RG zoning district, and we had a preliminary review by the DRB already. Landscape plan. There's some extensive landscaping proposed to take place, including taking down a large maple tree, and some issues surrounding those trees. At this time, I'll take comments for the applicant from the planning board, or questions. Mr. Crowder?
I'm not sure if this is for the applicant or this is for the board. I think there's way, way, way too much parking there. I would, I would suggest no additional parking. I think it's, I think when you have a two-unit house, it's two households that are living there, and it's not eight people living there. So I think, I think the two in the garage and you can park two in the driveway, that should be enough.
I don't hear any objections to that, so I assume that'll be one of our conditions. Mr. Keeve?
I had exactly the same thought. I was also struck by some of the feedback we got from the public that cited park, concerns about people parking on the street, though, and I wonder whether squeezing the parking that's in the driveway is going to push people out onto the street.
There's currently no parking on one side of the street between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And so that solves one quarter of the, you know, half the.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Mr. Crowder?
In addition, I think parking on the street is fine where it exists. It's traffic calming. It's, it's a good, it's a good thing.
Okay. Yes, especially.
That's true, except there's a parking restriction from December 1st, I believe, until April 1st. So can't park on the street at night during that time.
So that solves another third of the problem.
Yeah, right. So now we're up to one-third plus one-half.
Um, who's, someone's there? Yes.
I am not inclined to maybe have the parking to this degree because they need a waiver in order for some of it. But I'm afraid that making a judgment about only the garage room for two in the driveway isn't realistic. And from, for me, that, that garage door would discourage using the garage except in inclement weather. Like, I think people are going to pull up and not actually use the garage. I don't really know that, but, I mean, technically, we count the garage spaces, but I would not be inclined, I, I would like to see some additional parking. I think that's appropriate. I think this might be too much, and if it's, if it's skinny down to, too few spaces, I think it'll spill out onto the speed, street or just be not as organized as kind of a couple of hammerheads. So I, I take your point, but I wouldn't go to the extreme that you went to.
Ms. Brestrow?
Someone, I don't remember if it was Jonathan Tucker or if it was someone that you received a letter from, suggested that there is a lot of parking in this neighborhood. There are commercial sites in the neighborhood that have a fair amount of parking, and this individual suggested that there might be an arrangement to have parking from this site be allowed on those other properties, and you are allowed to authorize parking within 800 feet of a site. And it's, it can work out if these people are parking at night here and the businesses don't have business at night. So that's something that might be explored.
Brestrow, Mr. Schreiber?
So that was my email to Chris where I had inquired about that, but in a way, that's not our problem to solve. In other words, that could be up for the individual tenants, you know, to work out with the commercial areas. But there, there definitely is a problem of too many potatoes for the bag. You know, it's 100 pounds of potatoes in a 40-pound bag because I think that two spaces is two spaces in the setback. So, you know, in other words, two and a half cars is really three cars. So, I mean, I think that we should hold a line on that. But I have a real problem with the, kind of the pedestrian circulation through. So if you look at the, there's two sidewalks, one that goes from the front door to the parking, and then one goes, that goes from the, the new addition, the back where the kitchen is, back along the snow, and they're both dead end into parking spaces. And so that's really not a, an acceptable way to, you know, to deal with a walkway for all of the people that will be, you know, really, that pathway has to be continuous, and you can't have people walking through parking spaces. So when we talked about this during the site visit, you know, the answer was that the cars would park four feet apart, but really, that four-feet sidewalk really needs to give access to all the parking spaces. So, and that's both cases. So the ones going, going from the, the new addition, you know, just can't dead end into a parking space.
The only thing I would add is that it is a secondary entrance, not the primary entrance to the site, but I think you're, definitely make your comments.
Yeah, yeah. And then the issue with the snow, but, but the, so I'm, you know, if this is going to work, I think that the parking has to be reduced to meet the intent of the zoning, which doesn't allow more than two spaces in the front yard setback. It has to allow for reasonable pedestrian circulation on the site. And so you, you'll still meet the four-car minimum, and what happens to the additional parking is really up to the, you know, up to the, you know, to the developers. I do have, can I keep?
Please do.
Keep on my.
Your honor, roll.
Then we all go to, then we go to the definition of a duplex, which currently isn't defined. So we were working on a definition of that. And, you know, we talked about the unified look of it. So I appreciate the intent of trying to beat that, but there's still a real kind of awkwardness to the way that this is. to the way that this is, you know, developed. You know, it doesn't quite touch the garage, but then there's this little finger that does in order to make it one. So, you know, I would, I guess I would really like to see this worked on a little bit more. You know, that, that five-foot gap between the new house and the garage just bugs me. It's, seems dangerous and, and, you know, kind of, I'm not sure what the right word is, but it, on one hand, there's a real effort to detach, probably because it's cheaper to just build clean and not to attach it, but I think if it were actually attached, it would just be a better scheme.
If you could take the mic, I'm sorry.
I think the case here is that we have two roof lines that are not going to, are going to be very incongruous if we try to match them. And the idea was to be able to keep the existing roof line that the garage has, and, and be able to have a two-story building. The garage is a one-story building, so we couldn't connect one roof line to the other without making significant changes to the garage.
I could, yes, there's, actually, if you button them right up against each other, the cable roof of the, of the, okay, I see the, yeah, no, I see, you could do it.
Said the architect.
Yeah, right, right. No, I'm done, I'm done, I'm done.
Yes, Ms. Krueger?
I also noticed that on the site visit, that there would be this sort of gravel for drainage purposes between, and it isn't ideal, looks to me like it's going to be a damp, potentially damp, moldy kind of area. I could see the problem, financial problem in joining them appropriately because it's more complicated, but I, I had a concern, and I wanted to ask, we, we have on our list about, from the town engineer, about exceeding the turn, the radius, more paving coming out from the driveway to the street then. And you explained that you're repaving what's already there, but it seems to me that you're basically going to be replacing that parking area with some new configuration, so I, I wonder if it's in the purview of our site plan review to, when that construction, that site work is happening, to ask the applicant, to require that the applicant reduce the amount of paving for that end of the driveway. I don't know, maybe Ms. Brestrop could tell us if the fact that it's being repaved over what's already sort of non-conforming, grandfathered, would prevent us from asking that the end of the driveway be reconfigured.
Yes, Ms. Brestrop?
I think that's perfectly reasonable that you could ask that. I think perhaps the eighteen-foot width between the two bays of cars is useful to have the cars have enough space to back up, but as you get towards the street, the driveway could be narrowed.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Ms. Ford?
So, I'm just going to continue on from...
Could I, I just want to make a comment on the case of the two roof lines and the area in between. There are two, we're proposing that we're going to have two gutters, one on one side of the building, one on the existing garage. The amount of actual water that's going to actually fall in that area then will be minimal. We're reducing the amount of water that will come from the roof lines, or from the roofs into that area. I just wanted to make that clear.
So I just wanted to ask, because it came up when we did do the initial review with the design review board about the materials, and, you know, that there would be an attempt to, to have these two structures look like they belong together as much as possible, but I'm looking at elevations that show clavards that are radically different in the front building than they are in the back building. Is that the intent, that there can be two different materials? I mean, you said the color is going to be the same, but...
The new structure would have vinyl siding. It'd be maintenance-free, and, and the color, it, like I said, we had the color matched to the existing. The siding, I'm not even sure if it's still available that is on the current house. It was in good shape, and that's why it was elected to paint it.
Okay, roofing, you know, so at some point, there's, is there, there would be, roofing, is there an intent to have roofing be the same?
The roofing, the applicant has agreed that if necessary, he would add the same shingles that were on the new to the existing. So they would have the exact same architectural shingles. So that color would be, and color and texture would be exactly the same.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Other questions, Ms. Ford?
Well, I could keep going, but I, I think that we'll just, we'll stop there for the moment.
Let's talk about lighting for a moment. What are the light fixtures that you're proposing to install?
The applicant's proposing lighting on the garage and the two entrances to the unit, right on the, on the building, and it will be, you, the users will be the ones who will be turning on and off these lights.
Okay, and what kind of lighting would it be?
At this point, we don't have details for what exactly it's going to be. It will be wall packs and meeting all the dark sky regulations, but we don't have a detail for them.
And do you have a sense of what portion of the parking area and walkways would be lit by those lights?
The light on the garage would light most of the entrance to the garage. I don't know if it would extend all the way to the, to the driveway. Both of those, of these two entrances would be totally lit in the stairwells on both areas, just to make them safe, so that you're coming in at night and you're not tripping on them. I guess not to infringe on the neighbors, so we, it wouldn't be a light that would be extremely strong on that side.
Is there any lighting on the back patio at all?
There is some existing, I believe there's an existing light on the back patio, but we're not proposing any new lighting, just on the front entrances and the entrances close to the parking area.
I see, and are there any streetlights close by, or?
I believe there is one post light across, I'm not sure. I, I am not sure. I would not like to speculate just from looking at the aerial image that I have in front of me.
Thank you. There's any questions from the board before we go to the public? Okay, let's take some public comment. Yes, Ms. Wilder?
Paige Wilder, precinct ten. I live on Fearing Street. It's nice to be back here.
A pleasure to have you back.
I'm going to try and be as brief as possible, but I do have a lot of background information. I totally get that you guys have a very limited scope and very specific criteria to make your judgments on. I also understand that Mr. Zhang has been before a lot of boards, presenting a lot of different projects, and nobody has all the information except the planning department's Let me just get a little organized here. So I want to start with a letter that I sent today to Mr. Mora, the building commissioner, because I think it sets the tone for my major concern. I said, I see that Mr. Zhang's declaration of homestead on his Long Meadow property is still current. It is apparent that he is not at three twenty-one Lincoln despite a special permit for owner occupancy. Mail is being delivered to eight tenants at that address, though the owner occupancy requirement would limit it to four unrelated tenants. Tenants at that address, with the aid of UMass, have filed complaints against Mr. Zhang. Would you please update me on the status of the town's enforcement there? I am quite concerned that someone in violation of the town's bylaws is coming before yet another town committee with yet another request. So that is my main concern. I made five packets tonight, so some of you will have to share. May I have one for the record?
I'll just summarize what you've just given us from the table of contents.
I'm going to go through the contents.
Okay.
So, there have been neighbors knocking on three twenty-one each night this week, asking for Mr. Zhang, and his tenants have been lying that he's living there but not present. But I have heard that Mr. Mora has said publicly that he no longer claims to live there, and apparently, on his application, which is fairly, dated fairly recently, he puts his Long Meadow address. So, the first thing in the packet after the letter to Mora is a map of Zhang's properties in Amherst. I know we're discussing one property tonight, but I think that some of them are relevant. Seventy-nine Taylor is a very, very similar project, with a lot of on-the-ground data about how it has worked out. The next page is photographs of some of his properties in town, including seventy-nine Taylor, and I think that's a pretty good indication of how this next project will look. The next page is a list of Mr. Zhang's LLCs. I believe you're the attorney representing him? And you don't know his companies, or what he owns, or what his name is?
I'm here at the seat, I'm here at the seat.
Because I got all this off the internet. It's all of his different holdings. He has several different LLCs, named various things, that have properties in Amherst. The next page is a list of all his personal properties in Amherst, and the dates they were purchased, and they're listed by which LLC owns which one. The next one is a decision by the ZBA. They held a hearing on, I don't remember what it was. Oh, it was on lifting the owner occupancy requirement at three twenty-one Lincoln, and I include it because there was a lot of public testimony that night, and it completely moved the ZBA to make a decision they wouldn't have made otherwise. I lost my contents page. So I would just point out, in my contents, I've noted the pages where the public content, comments are, as well as where the ZBA comments are in terms of their decision. Next item is the property card for three twenty-one Lincoln, and I know that that doesn't relate to tonight's house. I included it because it shows that there is a special permit on that house that Mr. Zhang is in violation of, and I would point out, I think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think all the impassioned comments tonight were regarding Zhang's properties and no other landlord. The next item is his voter registration in Long Meadow, and the next item is his declaration of homestead on his house in Long Meadow. The next item is another example of how he has, I would say, purposefully deceived the town. This is an application for demolition of a barn at the property he owns at two ninety Lincoln. It says, "The reason for the demolition is the building's in poor shape. To create more lawn, increase lawn and garden area." That was submitted on seven thirty-one, no, that's when he paid. I don't know when that, seven thirty-one this year. Town inspected it, determined, or the historical commission inspected the barn and determined that it was not in poor shape at all. It was not a safety issue. The tenants in the front of the property said that the, they were more concerned with the barn coming down as a safety issue than the barn itself being there. I point out that it, the purpose was to create lawn. Three days after submitting this application to demo for those purposes, he submitted a site plan, that's the next piece, showing how the buildings he was going to build would fit. So I think that really couldn't have been developed in the three days after the permit The barn was destroyed this morning.
Okay, so can we come back to the current application, please?
Yes. I would just hope that you look at the conditions at seventy-nine Taylor as a good example of what might happen. It's really weird to sit here and talk about how it's going to be this two-family duplex when the reality of Mr. Zhang on the ground is that it will in fact be ten students, not eight, because students live in the living room and the attic and wherever they can, and he does not use best management practices. He's willing to take as much money as he can get from the students. The students are in very poor living conditions and file complaints against him, and he has a lot of money and a lot of lawyers. And so we're really talking about, I think it was the architect, Mr. Nieto, who said that there will be no parking impact. We're really talking about twenty cars, because there will be ten students, and each of them will have a boyfriend and girlfriend, and those cars will be coming and going at all hours of the night. So I am urged, oh, and I just want to, I don't think this applies to you, but I want to ask the town, when Mr. Nieto said this was a project by right, does that include someone who's in violation of town bylaws? Do they have that right? So I would urge that you don't allow any of the waivers, and that you consider the documents I've given you, and that, I don't know, you put as many restrictions on it as you can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wilder. Yes, sir, in the back.
Rachel Ruck, I live right across from forty-two Shamway Street at forty-seven. And to be quite honest, I think that we're all being sold to Brooklyn Bridge here. This guy can't even identify, with all due respect, sir. He doesn't know anything about his client. And this gentleman, on my right, may be the best architect or whatever in the world, but without all these changes, they can't do it. Period. So why should this body, or this town, go through all this stuff, change all the regulations that carry their way to law, to accommodate a gentleman like has been described to you all evening? In addition to that, that house is called a nuisance house. And we all know what a nuisance house is. And there's four guys sitting back there, they all live over there, and they're nice guys, and they're quiet, and we get along. And if things were, excuse me, stayed just as they are now, there might not be a problem with four, although they make noise. They come, they go, they talk, they do this, but so do I. No? Hey, you know, geez, I'm sorry. But the thing is this, they're not asking for a two-family. As the lady before me said, they're asking for a student motel. And what's the point? It doesn't go with the neighborhood at all. They can't even drive a damn pickup truck around back, I don't know how they're going to put it up, because as soon as you get far enough, you're violating the wetland. And then they've already cut, meaning the landlord, two trees are on the edge, it's supposed to be protected by fifty feet. There's two trees they've cut down already. I don't know if they asked you people, or whoever the appropriate body is, but no big deal, we'll just do it. Did a nice job renovating the house, and it's okay the way it is, although the neighborhood is saturated with students. And they're okay this year, really surprised me, because I've had them hauled away wholesale. And, you know, tough, but with the change. It's all going to be different, because these guys have guests, and they park out in front of my house. And there's only four of them, but what am I supposed to say? You can't have your girlfriend over, it's not going to work. But, they're going to do it anyway, so would I. But the thing is this, double it up or triple it up, you got problems. Cars here, cars there, fire department can't get through. We don't have enough cruisers to handle a party like that if they all had three guests, and they all got hammered. Bitch, you know, free-for-all, and, you know, I've done it all before. It's just a ridiculous idea, in my humble estimation, that will not work for the neighborhood, and it won't work for the town, especially with the people we're dealing with, not the reps here, but the guy behind it all. I mean, why should we allow the student motel? I really can't see it with all the changes, and the drain may work, but if it doesn't, what do we do? This guy's kind of, who knows? You can't find him, that little lawyer probably can't find him. And, you know, and we're stuck with it. You know, four is ridiculous, as a matter of fact, what he's done now, it happened before. It was a sewing room, because I used to know Mrs. Cheechee, because I used to live on Shamway Street, moved away, mom got sick, came back. So there was a closet in the sewing room. Ah, gee, now it's a bedroom. That creates more problems, because there's more people, more students. And as far as, well, you know, if you use the garage for a parking space, well, this gentleman said they're going to put the trash in the garage. So where does the trash go? Students aren't going to go, I'm going to park out in the street, the trash goes on the street. You know, these things haven't been considered. You're talking about lighting. What's he want, a Kmart parking lot light? He doesn't even know. He's sitting there going, oh, it'll be okay. But it won't be okay. You shouldn't say it'll be okay. Anyway, I'm going to think of a couple of more things before I get up and let somebody else talk, because I've got to work in the morning.
Just real quick.
Okay. Anyway, gentlemen and ladies, it's not a good idea, it makes no sense whatsoever, to change everything the regulations that carry their way to law, so they can put up a motel across from me and right next to some of my neighbors. Like I say, it was... Like I say, it was been designated a nuisance house before, and it will be again. It'll cost the town too much money and too many problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Rourke.
My name's Charles Sweeney. Right now, I'm a renter with four, what, three of my roommates, at forty-two Shamway. And I can speak to all of your concerns that there wouldn't be enough space with just the driveway we have now. There already isn't. We already fill up the driveway. The owner doesn't allow us to use the grass next to the driveway to park. We're already overloaded. No one goes in the, no one goes in the garage, like one of you mentioned. So I just don't see how it would work. Our main concern is we signed a lease under a different ownership. Now this new ownership wants to start construction during our tenure there, and more specifically at the end of our next semester during our finals. And it's just not fair to us right now, so. Those are basically my concerns, my roommate's concerns, and I'll leave the rest up to you guys.
Mr. Sweeney, thank you so much for coming in. We really appreciate it. Mr. Bloom?
I'm not even going to go into what page reviewed. I just wanted to mention that there's going to be a story, Mr. Shang, tonight on the Channel Twenty-two News at eleven o'clock.
I think the hearing tonight demonstrates why, it's very important, oh, Lisa Rubenstein, precinct ten, town meeting member. I think the hearing tonight demonstrates why we, and I know the planning board has approved going to special permit with the zoning board of appeals. It also kind of brings home to me the need for owner occupancy. Here is a ranch house that could be lived in, and maybe a modest addition for rental that would fit in appropriately with the neighborhood and go to stabilize the neighborhood. Instead, we're getting something that has a huge impact. I think I speak for the traffic I go down that street very often. There is a lot of traffic on that street. It's a cut-through now, especially with all the paving that's going on on Main Street. And I notice as I travel down, many rentals with many cars already parked every which way. This is going to have a huge impact, and to waive a parking or traffic study seems very presumptuous, but is very telling of the attitude of this particular LLC, because when this LLC has gone before other boards, and they've denied him a request, he has gone ahead anyway and done what he's wanted. So whatever strictures you might put on, there's going to be an enforcement issue, just from past practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rubenstein. Mr. O'Connor, real quick.
I have a number of points to make that are relevant. I'm trying to move as, along as quickly as possible. First, I'd like to request that the planning board incorporate, by reference, through the aegis of the, of the person who takes your notes, the testimony of the neighbors of Mr. Zhang's household as it was delivered for the last zoning article. In other words, the lady from, I think it's three-eighteen Lincoln Avenue, if I'm stating correct, and Miss Stacy from two-eighty Lincoln Avenue, that that testimony on that zoning article be incorporated into this hearing, as though we're giving it the hearing, so it doesn't have to be repeated.
I'm not sure about the procedure for that, but your request is duly noted.
The, I have a concern. My understanding is that in this neighborhood, which I drive through regularly, because I have business on Main Street, is that there are regularly more than four cars here. You're not going to get rid of people's cars by providing limited parking. You are going to end up with these cars on the street, on both sides of the street, as opposed to the side that they're actually supposed to park on. I think it is unrealistic. Most single-family homes don't use their garages for parking, you know, entirely. And when you have, I think, which will be clear, eight undergraduate students, or graduate students or whatever, I think the garage is going to fill up rather rapidly. There's no bicycle parking outside and so forth. There's, I just say that it's going to be difficult to claim that the parking, the spaces inside the garages will actually function as parking spaces. And I do think that this is, it's going to create a snow removal problem, but it's also going to create a disastrous neighborhood parking problem. And as someone who regularly goes to the high school, because of my assistance to a junior at the high school, ever since that addition was put on at Taylor Street and High Street, that, the corner of that street on the south side, where the, where Mr. Zhang's other property is, has been full of cars ever since that addition went in. And I don't know what happens after December first, but we had one nice winter. There's no guarantee we're going to have another one. So I simply, I don't think that this site can accommodate what is proposed. I would also like to refer the planning board to the last page of your various drawings. And although it doesn't give a layout for the ranch house, it does give the ground floor layout for the proposed addition. My understanding is that there, and I could be, stand corrected, I don't see a second-floor layout, but I understand that there'll be four bedrooms upstairs on the second floor. That's where the bedrooms will be. But if you look at that layout, I think it's quite clear, and, you know, and you, that's why I wanted to reference the testimony of the, of the Lincoln Avenue residents at the zoning hearing. If you look at the, the area that's labeled dining and living, is in all likelihood going to end up being, becoming bedrooms. It's just not realistic, given the amount of money that, that houses are renting for today, that people are not going to try to find a way to reduce their costs, and these, and this design is going to really accommodate six bedrooms. That's what's going to realistically happen here. So I'd like to say that, in closing, that there are, there are three different decisions that the, that the planning board could make on this. And I'd refer you to eleven, there's actually a section entitled, "Planning Board Decision", eleven point two-five. And, and what, the three decisions are, the first words of each thing are approval of the site plan, the second one is denial of the site plan, and the third is approval of the site plan subject to conditions. In my view, this site plan has so many problems, and both directly related to the proposal, and, and also related to the individual who is making the proposal, that this, this site plan should be denied. And I would, in essence, refer you to five sections of the, of the review criteria, and both general, environmental, and design. I would refer you to eleven point two-four-oh-two with respect to noise. I would refer you to eleven point two-four-one-six with respect to noise. And then I would, I would refer you to eleven point two-four-one-seven, simply because the, even though we may have the proper lighting and so forth, when cars, I think, as we've heard, are coming and going at all hours of the day and night, this is going to be a problem. We've heard testimony about other properties. I think we can, it would be reasonable to assume that this would not be different. With respect to design, I would refer you to eleven point two-four-two-one, and because I think that they, the entrance to the back building, as it, even though there may not be any windows on that side, everyone who enters that building from the parking lot directly is going to have to walk down that walkway, which is next door to, you know, not very far from a neighbor's house, and that activity is going to occur, I think, not just before ten o'clock at night. And then I would also refer you to eleven point two-four-two-three. I don't believe that there is anything harmonious about the, I appreciate the fact that the, that the owner went to the design review board, but I think that this is, you know, trying to put a giraffe's head on a donkey, and I don't think that there's anything harmonious about the, about what would, what would result from the proposal. So I think this is a, one of the very few site plans that the planning board has seen or may ever see that, that should be rejected and denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. I'd like to refer the board to another section here that, it just has to do with timing, because we're kind of running late tonight. We are hearing this site plan within the required time after submission, yes?
Yes, that's true.
Our zoning bylaw at eleven point two-five-one states that we shall render a decision within ninety days of the public hearing and file our decision with the town clerk's office. Is there any reason we can't put off deciding about this until after town meeting?
You have to render a decision within ninety days of closing the public hearing on this project. So as long as you keep the public hearing open, then you're okay.
Oh, okay.
And if you need to keep the public hearing open in order to get more information, or a revised site plan, or any information that you need, that's a legitimate reason for keeping the public hearing open.
So continuing the public hearing with a, possibly a direction to the applicant to try to address some of the concerns that have already come up at the meeting tonight. I would entertain such a motion, given that it's ten past ten. Mr. O'Keefe?
I'm not going to make that motion, but I'm just going to ask that we be specific in what we're requesting of the applicant, that warrants continuation of the hearing, because we can't just continue the hearing because we don't want to deal with it tonight or to...
Well, actually, we can. We could, I mean, we, if we're, if we're out of time, it's getting late, we can continue it to another night.
Sure. I would reiterate, though, that I think that we do have an obligation that if we find the plan to be deficient, that we at least give them something to work with, what areas we hope to get improvements in.
I think that...
Because otherwise, we're going to have the same conversation when we come back here again, a month or whatever the time is from now.
If I can try to speak to the essence of the situation is that it's, it's just too much for the site. There's no, the proposed project is trying to squeeze too much onto the existing site. A four-bedroom addition to this house is too much. Adding four cars to the parking lot is too much. It's, it's just, it doesn't fit on the site. That's what I've heard in terms of questions from the board and the public. And it's also, as far as a use, doubling the number of tenants on the site is incompatible with the requirements we have to go by in site plan review of making sure that a use is compatible with the neighborhood. So, I mean, we can get more specific, too, if anyone says. Also, I'll just add that I'm not ready to, in my opinion, grant any waivers on this project, and that the applicant should prepare a traffic impact statement, a signage plan, a lighting plan, and, what's the fourth one?
Erosion plan.
Soil erosion plan?
Parking.
Parking.
Parking plan, yeah.
No.
No, that's already included. We're talking about, yeah, it is parking. The waiver for, they proposed a waiver of section seven point zero-zero-two. It is parking. Yes, Ms. Kruger?
There's, I'm struggling a little with getting into four bedrooms and four bedrooms the size of the units, because I don't, I'm just uncomfortable. I can think of a scenario where somebody might have a family, and then, you know, the daughter comes and the four bedrooms. So I don't know how the, how we assess impact by the number of bedrooms. I think we're more limited by the functioning of the site. And I agree, I'm not inclined to give any waivers. I would like to see all the roofing material match, stripped, and, I mean, I'm just putting this out there for what I, I would like to see all the siding matched, if it means taking the siding off on the existing. I think where we can, where we have purview over the functioning of the site and what it looks like, because that's in our realm, then I would go to the, to get it as best as we have control over. But I'm, I'm not quite there of saying how big each of the units can be, or how many bedrooms, because we don't review that in any of our other permitting.
Mr. Carson?
I think that the second floor is inappropriate, because it's, again, we talked at other meetings about massing of buildings, and this, this is like a whole new additional house, rather than something that's in addition to the existing house.
I agree with you, Mr. Carson, the second floor isn't. Mr. O'Keefe?
And I also think that that does fall within our purview in terms of what we can review, because we are specifically tasked with making sure that it's compatible with the neighborhood. So, so I think that all the conversation here has satisfied what I was raising as a point that the applicant can take away from this, which is not just that we want the parking spaces to be tweaked, or the layout of the walkways to be altered to fit the parking better, but that we're fundamentally unhappy with the design that's been proposed, and that would likely encounter a significant degree of opposition on the board if it were to come back in the same form. So the applicant might wish to make fairly fundamental changes to the proposal.
I also have a comment with relation to the existing tenants of the existing house, and maybe Ms. Brestrop can speak to this. Are we, is it within our purview to specify a start time for construction? In other words, can we ask that construction be delayed until July, when the students, existing tenants have, you know, their lease is up, or they've finished finals? Yes?
I think I would have to consult the town council about that.
Ms. Adams, yes?
I do, of course, understand the difference between the purview of the zoning board of appeals and the purview that you have with site plan review. My question is, the testimony said that there were too many people being crammed into the allowable space. So, you know, we're looking at a doubling of the population. You're talking about this space allowed per person. I'm wondering whether, in fact, you are saying this should be revised so that there would be fewer tenants and fewer bedrooms for tenants.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Schreiber?
So we have touched on the actual duplexing of this also, so we've talked about the height, but in just my, I think the working definition of a duplex is that there's a shared wall between the units, or a shared floor between the units. I mean, I'm sorry, the...
I just wanted to say that they are currently... I just wanted to say that they are currently operating under the existing zoning bylaw, which is not that explicit about exactly how a duplex is defined. I should have said when the public hearing started that because the application was filed when it was, they're sort of in a, what should I say, never, never land in terms of zoning. They are going ahead with this application, and the building commissioner says that that is allowable. But if the zoning, if either of the zoning bylaws, zoning amendments that are being put forth about two-family houses is accepted by town meeting, they would be subject to those, to one or the other of those amendments. And so they may, in fact, have to come back and get a special permit from the ZBA, in which case they would be subject to the new definition. And actually, it would be a third zoning amendment, which has to do with the definition of duplex. So they would be subject to that. So I don't know if that helps to clarify things.
So lacking a definition of a duplex in our current zoning bylaw, then it's up to the wisdom of the nine members of the planning board to come up with that definition. So we can use examples that we've done before. For example, seventy-nine Taylor is one that's been cited. Or we can use our common sense. And so it's really our decision, not the building commissioner's decision, as to whether or not this is a, you know, this is actually a duplex. That's really under the planning board's purview. So I would submit that I don't, this doesn't fit my definition of a, you know, that, that breezeway that snakes through the garage doesn't fit my definition.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. All right. We need to set a, a date for the continuance.
You have two meetings coming up. One is December fifth and one is December nineteenth. The fifth is already filling up with various things and people who are coming to meet with you. I mean, that would be a possibility for the continuance. You might want to consider continuing it to the nineteenth, and then you'll be definitely past town meeting.
I see nodding heads. We'll continue it to the nineteenth.
Are you going to take a vote on that?
Yeah, we have to vote on that. We need a motion to continue this to the nineteenth of December. Mr. O'Keefe?
I move to continue the public hearing until Wednesday, December nineteenth at seven oh five, hopefully, PM.
Second?
Seven oh five, okay?
I think that's okay, yeah.
I will second.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. Thanks to the applicant for coming in, and we look forward to seeing you in December. Thank you very much, the public, for coming in as well. The board will take a two-minute break.
I would, too.
You don't agree with...
Yeah, but it's, when that application is made...
We're going to do warrant review and...
Let's see how it can.
Reports now.
One of the drawings showed a...
They could just eliminate the...
You know, and I was trying to keep, I thought, I was thinking about that also.
What is it that you don't think is...
That was the agreement they made, the needs.
We should have a poll, wouldn't we?
Well, well...
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's a...
It wasn't snowing here, though.
It came from the building commissioner, has given his opinion that the planning board and the application may move ahead with the site planning process with the understanding that if town meeting votes to approve the proposed zoning amendments with respect to two-family dwellings, this project will be subject to the amended zoning.
I thought you were... No, I didn't. Not really.
Bye. Thank you for coming.
I don't have the...
Bye. Thanks for coming.
Just before that.
A marathon. I was just thinking of that word, yeah. Just have to keep going. We're at mile twenty, and we're heading up the hill.
And that's absolutely true, but I think the key point...
Thank you.
Well, that's not going to apply here. It's not going to...
She would be subject to any changes.
But it's not going to apply here anyway.
Yeah, sure. I can prove that. That's just how I can.
All right, let's move on. The folks in the gallery could... If you could take your conversation out to the hall, please. Thank you. The next item on our agenda for tonight is a town meeting. That's item four on the agenda. Warrant review, a review of planning board reports and speakers for the citizen petition articles. Mr. Tucker?
I have a question of clarification. Part of what I left to do was to go be an elf and start working on the planning board reports to town meeting for the, the two articles you had just acted on. And I noticed that in the vote on article sixteen, the, the motion was to support article sixteen if thirteen, articles thirteen or fourteen do not pass. Was and or or? Is it both have to not pass?
Mr. Crowner?
My intention was and, that they both had to fail.
If they both failed?
Both failed.
If they, so only under the circumstance where they both fail would you support article sixteen. Otherwise, you would not support it. Which led me back through the discussion, which I was trying to summarize. And it came to Mr. Schreiber's and Mr. O'Keefe's comments that even if those circumstances occurred, you would be supporting an article that would leave a situation where brand-new duplexes in the RG district would be by right through site plan review approval on cleared sites, whereas other, the other uses had been moved into the other use category, principally converted dwelling. And the issue of whether or not that would encourage demolitions. And it prompted me to, to ask you, not only for that clarification, but is that, is that the outcome you want to be willing to support?
I think that that would be something that would need to be brought up to town meeting, that that was one of the things we considered, and let town meeting decide.
We were certainly aware of that.
Yeah.
At the point that we took the vote, so...
Okay. But it's, it's and, not or. And thirteen and fourteen. Okay. Thank you.
I'm not quite sure how to go through these pieces. The, just for the, for the, everyone's, if people are watching, still watching at home, the fall town meeting begins on November nineteenth. And the town meeting this year starts at seven instead of seven thirty. Just that out there. It's not clear at what stage our articles will be going through town meeting, but we have dates scheduled through December fifth, potentially. Just as another preface, we had talked about having meetings prior to town meeting on the nights that our articles are scheduled. We don't know necessarily, and no one's proposed, proposing a date certain, and I'm not sure that I would in this case, because these are not enormous articles like ones we've asked for a date certain before. So it may or may not be that we have a meeting scheduled on the night of actual town meeting. So we may, just, just to keep that in mind, that we were talking about that. I guess one thing to talk about is, the next thing is speakers for the two petition articles. I don't, I don't quite understand why we're being asked to speak on these. Ms. Brestrop?
You're not being asked to speak. It's just if you want to speak. We're giving you the opportunity to identify yourselves so we can tell the select board.
Ordinarily, you, you provide a written report to town meeting on all zoning amendments. And ordinarily, someone from the planning board reports briefly on what the board's reaction was to the petition articles to town meeting. It's not a presentation of it. It's a report of the board's...
Does anyone feel up to doing that, want to take that on?
If no one else, I'd rather...
You have a very short tolerance for silence, Mr. Crowner. Much appreciated.
Everyone stepped back.
I believe you've been nominated.
It's right there.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crowner. And we, you know, if we need to, we can switch it up. So we have this on the agenda, but I'm not sure what to do with it. Ms. Brestrop?
Normally, you go through the town meeting warrant and decide if there are any other articles that you'd like to speak to, aside from zoning articles.
Okay.
And then Mr. Tucker has prepared the reports for the town meeting, and you would just tell him or tell me whether you agree with what has been written, or whether there are some changes.
Yes, they have been set out.
So it's a little late for that. But if you have any comments about it, I suppose we can. Otherwise, I'm...
Can I make a really quick comment, just what I can remember, because I was reading them and making some notes? I think we have to be really careful. In the reports, they talk about by right and special permit. And whenever we do that, maybe, maybe this can be part of the presentation, to make sure people really understand what those words mean. And we use conversion in a generic way in one place and then in a technical zoning way. It's just because people, we all struggle with understanding zoning. Let's not assume that when we throw out by right, that means something to eighty percent of the people sitting there. Similarly, what's the difference between special permit and by right? So can't change the report, but just, I picked that up in general.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. That's a good point. Well-made. Zoning is not easy.
It's own language.
Except for Mr. Tucker. So I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda, because in the interest of time. Yes, Mr. Crowner?
I actually would be interested in taking a position on, on one of the...
Oh, you would? Okay, sure.
On article nineteen.
Which one?
Nineteen.
I'll tell you in a second. Would you like to elaborate?
Sure. I've, I've been present at the presentation of this article to the finance committee and to the select board, so I'm familiar with it. It's, it's a, additions amendments to the general bylaw about nuisance house. And it, as I see it, it does two main things. One is to add the property management company or person to the list of people who gets notice of designation as a nuisance house, in addition to the owner. And the second is that it, it changes from may to shall the imposition of response costs when it, when those are determined. And so I think there, there might be a few other language changes here and there, but I think those are the two main things. And I, having listened to the arguments on both sides, I, I support the changes. And I, and I, and I think that it would be nice to show some solidarity to the citizens who are trying to make a difference, indicate that this is, you know, one part of a multi-multi-step process. And, and so, you know, I think it's, it's not a zoning issue, but I think it's something that we can support as, as, in keeping with what we're trying to do overall.
I see nodding heads. No, I see some nodding heads. Mr. Tucker?
One of the other things that this does is to, in a number of places, it's adding rent, adding rental property managers. It adds them to the list of folks who are responsible and upon whom the town can impose liability for nuisances and harms caused by loud and unruly gatherings, et cetera, et cetera. It doesn't, nor does the existing language, provide a process for determining who's liable for what. Right now, the presumption in almost all cases with violations is that the property owner is responsible. If a tenant or someone is behaving poorly, there are separate laws that, that come to bear on them. The question is, how, how would you assign liability to a rental property manager as opposed to a property owner, or both? Something that would have to, if this was passed, it would have to be worked out. It's not in the regulations.
That is, they say, is for the lawyers.
That's right. Uh-oh.
Ms. Kruger?
Well, one thing is, I read this a while ago, and I, I did hear one presentation, but I, I wouldn't want to look at it again before I was ready to really take a position as a board. Of course, as individuals, we can always speak to town meeting. But the liability question for the management, property managers, I, I understand the intent of that, but where I got hung up with that is that may be so onerous that management companies, the better ones, don't want to manage properties in Amherst. And we could have an unintended consequence, perhaps, of where we're now requiring all these managers and management plan of making it impossible to find anyone well-qualified to manage properties here.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Response, Mr. Carson?
I just have a question about article eighteen. May I ask about, I wanted to ask the staff, is where we left that one was that the petitioners were considering working with you and revising the language? Has that happened, or is it...
There was a new version presented at the select board meeting on Monday night that had been prepared, I believe, by Mr. O'Connor. It added a lot of language to the end of, of the language in the, in the warrant article. I think the theory is that, that the language in the warrant article now is so broad that, you know, adding anything or bringing it, finding it any, in any way automatically falls within scope. I have some questions about that, and I've forwarded those questions to the town moderator. They had, the petitioners indicated at Monday night that they were going to speak to the town moderator. I've heard nothing about that. So I, I don't know where that stands. I have not received anything further since the version that I received on Monday night was handed to me as they were presenting it to the select board. I, I think probably the most likely outcome is that the moderator may rule some or most of the changes to be beyond the scope. And we then are in a position of dealing with, with mostly what we have in the language. But I, again, I don't know. I have not received anything. There has been no communication from the, from the petitioners on this.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
I'm willing to speak to that one if, if it does come up, but I'd have to have some kind of preparation as to what they're, what they're planning.
So, so would we.
Unless, is anybody else interested in that one?
Your comments would be most welcome, Mr. Carson.
Okay. If you'll let me know what, what they're doing.
Okay. We're back, we're back on nineteen, though. So the, Mr. Mr. Crowner wanted to take a position as, as a board?
Yeah, or at least make a statement or something.
Do you want to prepare some remarks and run them by the board at the next meeting, or...
Yeah, I guess, I guess I can do that.
Because I hear some concerns. So I think if, if the, if you had something specific that you were going to say, that it might be helpful in terms of...
I don't think I would say anything more than what I, what I said to you, so...
Ms. Brestrop?
You're not meeting again till December fifth.
Oh, so...
Unless you want to. Always schedule something.
That's the best news I've heard all night.
I thought we were going to meet before town meeting.
Well, you can if you want to.
Yeah.
But you haven't scheduled that.
Right.
I don't feel strongly... Further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Crowner. Great suggestion. Was there anything else as far as the town meeting that we need to address tonight? Going once? Going twice? Moving on to the next item?
Excuse me. There is the one item that Mr. Crowner brought up, which is whether you want to meet before town meeting.
We would have to schedule that, wouldn't we? But we don't know that we'll be.
We can schedule something by email, which may be the right way to do it. I'm not sure. Maybe Mr. Tucker has a suggestion.
If, if it would be possible for you to decide on a time tonight, it would be easier for all concerned.
Well, what we've done in the past is to schedule it and then cancel it if needed, which I propose would be a good choice.
Next Wednesday is the fourteenth. Next Wednesday is the fourteenth.
Yes, Mr. Crowner?
My suggestion and hope would be that we would schedule it for six o'clock or six fifteen on November nineteenth and December third, or whatever the second day is, November twenty-second, twenty-sixth, I guess. Schedule two, two meetings, those two meetings, and only hold them if we have business to discuss. And that business would be if the petitioner has language that we need to respond to, or whatever. Otherwise, you know, can be called off administratively or something.
Yeah. I agree. Let's do that. Unless I see someone saying no.
November nineteenth and November twenty-sixth, at six o'clock?
Yes.
I would, I would recommend six o'clock.
Yes.
And then.
In the, at the middle school.
At the middle school? And how would we know what the topic, agenda would be?
Not reasonably anticipated.
Discussion of ongoing developments with respect to warrant article.
Is town meeting being held on the twenty-sixth and the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
I would, I would expect that it would take two days at the most, right?
Did you say most or at least?
The most.
I think that, I think town meeting will move through these fairly quickly.
But there may be a lot of presentations.
Well, if on the nineteenth, it looks like it's going to take longer than the twenty-sixth, then we can, we still have time to schedule for the twenty-eighth on the nineteenth, right? Ms. Brestrop?
I understand that scheduling rooms at the middle school has become more and more difficult, so if that becomes impossible, would you consider meeting here?
Thank you.
Very briefly.
Yeah, very briefly. How many rooms, they, they have a million rooms there. How can they all be full?
It's not that they're full. It's that they're hard to schedule.
The classrooms are all, you can't use those?
The library. That's where we've.
All right. Okay. Room closet. Moving on, please. We really have to move on. The, we have a review of minor changes to site plan review twenty-ten zero-zero-one-two, Patrick Caymans, three-twenty-one Main Street. Ms. Kruger? I mean, Brestrop?
I convinced Mr. Caymans that he'd be better off coming back on December fifth.
Well done. Signing of decision for Boltwood Avenue, Town of Amherst. We have a new version, I understand. Yes?
I gave you just one sheet, sheet, page number seven, which outlines the conditions, and I did email this to you, I believe, yesterday or the day before. So it's pretty much verbatim what you decided on October seventeenth and rearranged in categories like Ms. Anderson suggested.
So the conditions are, under category barriers landscaping and parking space numbering, provide a low barrier approximately three-foot-high fence of plantings along the east edge of the parking lot to screen headlights from shining into the windows of the adjacent property. The location of this barrier should be shown on the final revised site plan. If the barrier is to be fenced, photographed, or sketched, the proposed fence should be submitted to the board for its review and approval at a public meeting. The barriers in the form of plantings, information on the number, size, and species of plants to be installed, shall be shown on the final revised site plan. Two, the numbers of parking spaces twelve through eighteen should be painted on the barrier or fence along the east edge of the parking lot or similar situation found, enabling the numbers to be visible when snow obscures the numbers of painted on the pavement. A similar solution for displaying the numbers for spaces one through eleven shall be implemented. Alternatively, the town could consider mounting a sign near the central parking machine, displaying a site plan of the parking lot showing the locations and numbers of parking spaces. Three, consider installing a planted screen between the generator and the street to screen the generator from view. Proposed plantings shall be shown on the final revised site plan. Four, landscaping shall be installed in accordance with the landscape plan, in this case, the final revised site plan, and once installed, shall be continually maintained. Lighting. Five, a final revised site plan, including lighting, shall be submitted for review and approval by the board at a public meeting. The final revised site plan shall show the locations of the two new pole-mounted lights and existing light fixtures mounted on the building, in the alley going out to Main Street, and in the alley going out to Boltwood Avenue. Six, lighting, lighting shall be installed at the parking machine so that the parking machine is readable at night. Seven, all exterior lighting shall be dark sky compliant. Exterior lighting shall be downcast and/or shielded and shall not shine onto adjacent properties or streets. Other. Eight, the generator shall be painted to match the noise-dampening enclosure in the building, i.e., blick, brick red. Nine, four copies of final revised plans submitted to the planning department. Everybody okay with that? Ms. Ford?
How long does an applicant, or, you know, anybody applying for the, how, how long do they have to meet these conditions? Or when do they have to, when do they have to be met by?
This is an odd situation because the parking lot is installed.
I know. I'm just curious.
So it's up to the building commissioner to enforce these conditions.
I mean, I just, yeah.
All right. Well, let's, I, I hear your concern, Ms. Ford, and I suggest that we schedule a follow-up on this.
Site visit?
Hmm.
Or discussion?
Discussion. If we haven't heard from them in three months.
Three months.
Does that sound okay?
Good night, Mr. Tucker.
Good night, Mr. Tucker.
Yes, that sounds okay. May I pass this around for your signatures?
We have other decisions to sign. Oriental flavor, twenty-five South Pleasant Street. That's twenty-thirteen, number two, and two-seventy-one South Pleasant Street for Amherst College. That's twenty-thirteen, number three.
And you do have copies of those decisions on your desk. The conditions for those were pretty limited.
Yep.
So may I pass those along for signature?
Please do.
I don't sign those, Kruger.
I think you don't sign those because you weren't there.
Okay. Moving right along. Any topics not reasonably anticipated? Okay. Chapter sixty-one removal request, Flat Hills Road, Lot One, WD Cowls, Inc. We have a notice of intent to sell. Attorney Peter McConnell. Everyone should review it. We have addressed similar situations many times in the past. I didn't see anything about this one that's much different from any of the previous ones we've looked at, but anyone is welcome to chime in. So the options for the planning board on this are to take no position, to recommend that the town not, or to recommend that the town exercise its right of first refusal on this, to purchase it for the sum of ninety-five thousand dollars, or to recommend against the purchase. Also, we've had, Mr. Crowner has proposed in the past adding a sort of a signing statement to it.
Yeah, I'm not going to bother at this time. If someone else wants to make that motion, I will happily second, but I've made my point.
Okay. Do we have another type of motion? Or any discussion about this at all? I don't see this as being something special that the town should try to acquire, so that's my position.
There, there was a motion last time that you could, you know, use if you wanted to.
What did it say?
If you're talking about my motion.
No, I'm not talking about your motion.
I think I made a, I think I moved to recommend to the select board that the town not exercise its right of first refusal.
Any further discussion? All in favor? opposed? No abstentions? Thank you.
May I ask who seconded?
Mr. O'Keefe. Planning board schedule, we've already discussed. Any other topics not reasonably anticipated? All right. We have a A and R, I believe, which is a fairly straightforward one.
Never ever say that.
No, it is. I do, believe me, I wouldn't if I didn't, I, I've seen it already.
Ten of eleven, they're all very. It's taken the town common and divided in half.
Right.
Not controversial at all.
No.
Yeah, right.
I'm way behind. I sleep at six.
It's going to be converted to a two-family dwelling.
So this is a property on Potline Lane owned by Nancy Antic, and it's outlined here in yellow. It's a rather large property, and it consists of two parcels. One of the parcels has a house on it, and it has two driveways coming in from either side. I understand it was a smaller house that was expanded and ended up with two driveways. But anyway, she owns this larger property out in the back and would like to sell that to someone who's planning to build a house behind hers. That house can be accessed from a driveway that would be on the west side of her property. I think that's right. No, the east side of her property. And she is going to take a little triangle off the larger piece to allow her to use the driveway on the east side of her property. No, I'm, I'm going to show you the A and R plan. That was just a plan to show you where this thing is in space, and here is the plan, the A and R plan.
Those are the soccer fields.
That's not make her come all the way. It's just that little triangle.
Just a little triangle. She's taking from one piece and giving it to the other piece. Okay?
So that she can sell that one.
So that she can sell the larger piece.
Someone's going to build a house.
And this new lot, as reconfigured, both lots will conform with the frontage requirements of the zoning bylaw?
Yes.
I don't know if we, do we, I can't even remember now if we approve these by motion or if I just start signing them.
I don't think we do.
All right.
Prove them out required.
Does anyone have anything that ranks a nine or higher on a scale of one to ten that they need to talk about? If not, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Any upcoming ideas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
My six solid hour of sitting here.
Have a good night.